All right, well, good morning, everyone. Yay, day two of your time together in this January retreat, getting clear about this next year. What would be great is we'll do a modified, what I call a check-in. One of the things that was in the agenda was inviting people to kind of give reflections overnight. Perhaps what you could do is narrow that down maybe to a word or two. You know, maybe coming in the room saying, "Good morning, you know, I'm ready." Or, "Good morning," you know, whatever word or two kind of is striking you is again, you're entering the room. And then we will move through the agenda. We'll give you the architecture around that in just a moment. So, just like we did yesterday, first person to go, you just call on your next colleague and tell everybody whose camera is on has had a chance to say hello in the room. Again, one or two words about how you're entering the room today. Who'd like to start?
Hi, this is Debbie, City Manager's Office Assistant, ready for day two. Let's make this a good day, passing it over to Ken Gambly.
Oh, I'm not muted. Good. Day two, day one was fun, and there's blue sky and some mammoth, so anything's possible. And how about Chris Ross?
Good morning. Let's make it through today. I will pick, Angelie.
Good morning. Happy Friday, and I'll pass it over to Lisa Marshall.
Good morning, everyone. It is a beautiful day in some mammoth. The skies out, or the sun is out and the sky is blue. So I'm looking forward to today and this weekend, and I'll pass it over to David Pyle.
Good morning, everyone. It's always a great day when it's Friday and you've concluded the week and it's been a short week. So everything's been a little compressed, so I'm looking forward to working with you all today and the weekend. Thank you. And I'll pass it over to Jim.
Morning, everyone. Little flurry of activity for us in IT world this morning. Good, obviously successful. We've got lots of people here now. Looking forward to the day. I'll pass it on to Erin.
Morning, everyone. Coffee is good. Happy Friday. I will pass it on to Councilmember Stuart.
Thank you. I'm excited, and I'm going to quote my new favorite poet and say, "For there is always light if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it."
Who'd you like to call on next, Pam?
Oh, sorry. I will call on Kelly Hildy.
Good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. I'm going to call on Kristi Malchow.
Kristi, you're on mute.
Thanks. Sorry, I had it off. I thought I had it off of you. I was just saying, "Good morning, everyone." I've had three birds fly into my window here this morning, so I'm hoping I don't have any more. No one's been knocked out yet. I will pass it over to Karen.
Good morning. I am not a morning person, but go pack, go. Hope they win this weekend. Chief Clark.
Good morning. I'll go for the pack too, Mayor. Great Friday. Let's get it done. And of course, I'm passing to the Police Chief.
Morning, everyone. It's always a great day when I see that smiling Fire Chiefs face. And I'm looking forward to hearing what our priorities are for the year. And I will pass it on to Jeff Eeks.
Good morning, good morning. A green woolly bugger is very successful on certain lakes. But that being said, my words are adaptive, resilient, and optimistic. And I'll pass it over to Danica.
Good morning, everyone. I'll share a thought rather than the word. And my thought is, this feels a lot like middle school dodgeball. Like, who are you gonna pick? And who's gonna be left last? So I'll leave it there with a funny this morning. Dave, are you done? Have you gone yet? I'll pass it to you if you haven't.
No, I haven't. Thank you, Danica. And my word is opportunity, great opportunity for growth today. And let's see, I'll pass it over to Kevin T.
All right, thanks, Dave. Good morning, everyone. Glad to be included. And I will pass it off to Councilman Tring.
Good morning. Nothing gets me down on a Friday. And I'll pass it on to Chris.
Okay, assume you mean me. This is Chris. I'm glad not to be last because I'm terrible at dodgeball, and I would usually be last. And I'm looking forward to an interesting day. And I will pass it on to, see who's left here, Lita.
Hi, everybody. Let's see, am I on? Welcome, and I'm optimistic for a productive day today. And I'll pass this on to who's left. Mike Sugg, have you spoken?
I have not. Morning, everybody. Thank God, it's Friday, and I'm looking forward to a productive day today. Passing it on to Celia.
Good morning, everyone. The E-news just got sent. That's all.
Anybody else? All right, well, I'm the last one.
I apologize. Did I need to point, call on somebody?
I think you're the last one of the group, so I think you're good. Thanks, Celia. And then, yeah, I'm ready for the day. I don't mind being last to pick. It's about, I'll bet, it's about a reframe, right? It's like, who, which team do I get to play with? I get to play with both. I like it. So, good morning. And so today's intentions, right, are to, we're gonna pick up the conversation from yesterday that we started with the council on areas to improve around communication. And I actually have taken, you know, one of the things that I realized is that when we're in person, you know, usually facilitator, we have our, you know, chart paper, right? And we're kind of focusing the energy there and writing notes. And I was using chat a little bit, but I took our notes from the chat, and we're gonna revisit that so that you can see some of the language, so that we can get clearer about some of your intentions. From there, there'll be some things that the city wants to offer about things that they can do, in particular around improving communication. And then we move into some of the clear work that you also need out of today is the work plan and priorities, right? So that will come, depending, that could come a little bit before lunch and then definitely after lunch. So we'll be toggling that. I know that we're starting a little bit late this morning. That gives us a little bit less content time. So I want to plant a seed early and just see, would you be willing to take a 45-minute lunch, right? Something like that. So let's revisit that as the time gets a little bit closer, so that we can maximize the time together. So we'll revisit that, like I said, later toward lunch. And then after lunch, like I said, priorities, give an update on some hopeful intentional, hopeful strategic planning. And then if there's time, talk about some values for the city. And if not, we'll continue to make sure that the larger pieces that you need to get done today around priorities or plan are taken care of. But before we dive into any content, Lisa wanted to share something, so I wanted to kind of toss the ball to her.
Thanks, Wendy, and thank you, everyone. I hate to start off the day with a somber note, but I do want to caution you that this meeting is open to the public, and your work plan items contain quite a bit of latitude for you to discuss. I'm very mindful, and I want you to be very mindful, that we do have pending litigation ongoing currently with the Jaren Compliance Hearing, which is not yet complete, and with the STCA litigation. And I'd also encourage you to be mindful of issues that touch on those two pieces of litigation. If you have any questions, let me know. And I will certainly be having my eye on the ball and will give you a timeout signal if I think something is getting into the legal strategy area that would probably be best discussed, not in the public eye. That said, I'll turn it back over to you, Wendy.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay. I am gonna share a screen, and this will be the notes that I picked up off of the chat yesterday, right? So in a way, what I'm looking for, again, this conversation is for generally the council members, right? And there were two sets of things that we did yesterday. Talked a little bit about what would be the values at the group level, right? What, how did you want to take the things that we had spent some time at the individual level? What are the values that you want to shape your conversations? And I recognize that a couple of council members weren't all, weren't there to weigh in on this. But these are the areas that you talked about, right? Service, integrity, honesty, a fair amount of courage, right, to take calculated risks, right? And I know that you can read. I'm not gonna read everything to you. But I just wanted to say the beauty of this is to remind us about that these are the, these are your agreements to date, right? Or to this moment, and I know that we still need a couple of the other council members to weigh in. But if this is good, then we can use that as a springboard into the conversation around communication. So for those folks that, are you okay with that so far? The courage to listen to each other, take, like I said, that, take uncomfortable and calculated risks. You're gonna listen to each other. The integrity about being open and honest, right? Keeping it real, that authentic piece. So perhaps Pam and Ken, since you weren't there for all of this conversation, I know that you got to see some of it later, but are you okay with these things? Do these things feel like the right guides to guide your conversation this morning?
Yeah, works for me.
Beautiful. Thanks, you guys. I'm gonna roll it up and keep our attention in here. So when we first started the conversation together, you know, I would say, and I separated this by just some space, because these are the things that you started to generate, and I would say that these were more of the themes. And then below that, you started to get more specific about, well, what can we do about that, right? And I don't think we completely landed on what your agreement is. So I just want to check in around that, right? Because let me just offer this. We can't fix everything, right? If you think about, if you were to buy a fixer-upper home, right? There's several things that make the list of things that you might want to improve, right? But as a group, if you make a couple of adjustments, maybe you focus your energy and you fix some of the things in the kitchen, right? You just improve the kitchen, and then next it's gonna be the bathroom. But you're gonna start somewhere, and if you start to make improvements there, you know, the whole flow of the house might, might get a little bit better, even though you know that there's things in other rooms that you want to fix. So I just want to premise that by saying, when we look at some of these improvement areas in communication, if you make a few adjustments, and if you do them well, you're gonna feel it, right? So let's focus on some of the things perhaps that you offered yesterday. You know, and maybe it's this one first. Is it possible, and I'll increase the size here, make this a little bit easier for folks, okay? Is it possible that council member, to copy council member, so you're aware of what's happening, right? And then as that moved into, you know, talking about a summary, then a specific idea came in about, do you want to look at what Redmond does, right? And then there was a hybrid suggestion around that. So let's, let's bring this piece to closure. If you were to make an adjustment, right? Do you want, what do you want to do specifically? What edits can I make to one of these bullets so that you feel like you have an agreement?
I'm happy to jump in. I think, again, I think if we use our council rules as our guide, I don't think, you know, to Councilmember Tring's point earlier, I don't think we want to inundate one another's email boxes with emails on, you know, repetitious subject matter or, you know, stuff. I think if it's pertinent to the rest of the council, if we use that as our guide, I think that's sufficient. So saying we're gonna copy the council, and every message we send relative to city business is going to inundate our inboxes, and we will not be able to weed through and find stuff we need.
So Kristi, if I'm hearing you correct, you're just suggesting that you feel like you already have criteria in your council rules? And just to kind of live that and honor that? Okay. Pam?
Yeah, I completely agree. I just think we probably need to get a little more specific around pertinent to the rest of council. So I think if we could put a little bit more of a definition there, I would agree. I think we need to use good judgment that if you're sending a congratulations or a thank you, that doesn't need to be a reply all or a copy all. But I think that if it is, if it is discussing, you know, things that are going to come up or something important, some topic that we need to start learning about or getting up to speed on, I think that's where we need to put a little bit more definition around that. And as I have understood it is that, you know, you can always copy all of council on things. We just can't all necessarily weigh in on an email that may violate Open Public Meetings Act, but we can all be copied on it. And I guess getting that clarity that says, if it's a topic of something we think we're gonna bring forward, and people need to be aware that it's even being proposed, so that we can start to get up to speed on it, I think that's pertinent.
Is that fair? And by the way, you know, if I start to type something that doesn't fit what you want, let me know. And I know, again, this is being recorded by a couple of people, but I think it's easier for us just to kind of make sure that you feel comfortable in the agreements that you're making. So so far, and what helps me with this is if the rest of the council members are okay with what you're seeing here, right? You already have your council rules as a guide, but are you okay with this clarification about delineating that the thank you note versus if it's a topic that you want to bring forward? Are you okay with what's written here so far? I'm not seeing any hands. Does it, does it work for you?
Yeah, it works.
Thanks. Karen, Chris? You're okay with that?
I think this requires sound judgment, and it really comes down to thinking about what's gonna come up as potential agenda item. And if you're working on something with someone or some staff, it might, that's where it's appropriate. And beyond that, I think that's, that's where the big, big target-rich area is, is using our judge for what's gonna come up. So we're all starting to study the same issues earlier than when it shows up at the dice.
Excellent. You know, my suggestion again is the more that you share with each other, you know, like, like, that was great. Thank you for copying us. That's exactly the kind of level that we're looking for. If you give each other some of that feedback in between, I think it'll become easier for you, and you'll find that sweet. Because what I'm seeing is that you just want to find that sweet spot between not inundating each other with things, but at the same time, keeping each other informed, so that you can bring your best selves to the, to the table. So, nice job on this. Okay, so it seems that you have landed on something. Let me loop back. Is this good enough? Or did you want to do something around what the city of Redmond does? That seems to me it's like a hanging jad and just not having anything hanging out there. Do you want to give that a shot, or do you feel like what you've just agreed to is good?
Looks good to me, as is.
Thanks, Kent. Ken?
Yeah, I think with the combination of our council rules, I think our council rules are pretty specific. And I'm fine with that, without going any further.
Great. Kristi, you're good with this? Beautiful. Chris? Beautiful. All right. Hello. See, I'm a visual person. It makes things easier for us. Karen, great. And Pam, are you, you good? Sweet. All right. That seemed to me, in essence, of what you're talking about in these other places. So you're committing to give each other heads up as, as you see it. So I will...
Wendy, as long as we're clear, this is, obviously, it's discretionary, right? This, as Councilmember Ross said, this is best judgment. So just wanna reiterate that this is based on our best judgment of the individual council members, based on the existing council rules, that that's also gonna be the driving factor.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And that our intent is to do good for the city.
Yeah.
I'd love to add, though, that our intent should also be full transparency. So I appreciate that we should have good judgment, but I think as long as it doesn't violate the, if it's something we intend to bring forward, then it needs to be copied to everyone. I don't, I don't know that there, we should need a lot of wiggle room in that one, right?
Counsel, if it's helpful, I might make a suggestion. I can understand not wanting to violate OCMA, which Wendy, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but sometimes if counsel starts hitting reply all and then having a conversation over email, it can be an Open Meetings Act violation. So maybe a way to prevent that might be to have a banner on your email saying, please, a reminder not to hit reply all or something, just as a reminder. Maybe that would reduce that risk.
Okay, so reminder banners.
Thank you, Lisa, for stating that a lot clearer than I could.
Something like that. Can they loop back with you, Lysus, for some suggested language? Would that be fair? Can I make that note?
Sure, absolutely. Happy to.
Okay. I love it. Sound good? Excellent. Well, I'm gonna hit save. This seemed to be one of the bigger things that you guys had talked about. And again, I just want to say that sometimes small adjustments can make a really big impact. And so that sounds like there's a clear commitment about wanting to keep each other informed and some good intentionality around that, and honoring transparency, but also understanding the context in which you're operating with the reply all. There are some offers that, and I'm using the word offer, but I just want to, I want to turn it over in just a second to Dave. So I'm gonna gear you up. There were some things also in your pre-retreat interviews that you had made some suggestions or said, these are some areas that we could, you know, if the agenda or the meeting packet that we have to read, the timing around that. If some things were different, I'd feel, you know, more prepared for the meetings, things like that. So we want to show some responsiveness around the city team, looking at some of the things that you had offered, and they want to show some response about what they can do about some of those areas. So let me turn it over to Dave, and I know that Mike is there to help support you and however you want to kind of manage this piece.
All right, thank you, Wendy. Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff, and public. On this issue, we did go back and study this, and I've given it some, a lot of thought, and talked with the staff, got their feedback. Mike has a PowerPoint, so we, if we can, we'll run through these. I think I debated about going through all of them. We'll just kind of go through item by item, so that we can address them. And there, there's about four different responses that I have here. So on this one, there was feedback from council members acknowledging that council members have other responsibilities to their family, to the community, to their work, and to other social support that they might have going on. And we've talked about it. I acknowledge it, receiving a package on a Thursday or Friday. Some people like to cram, but it forces you to cram, and it's not fair. And this has been a tough year. Yeah, COVID gives a little bit of cover here, and we're all scrambling. But I acknowledge that we, we could have done better sooner, but this is a new start. So what I'm proposing is to revise the package publication date to the Tuesday before the meeting. Nope. Mike, what do we got here? Okay, so, oh, that, that was part of the response. So the, the items would be due to the city manager for review three Fridays before the meeting. So staff, this requires us to reprogram our communications and how you get information to me. And we'll talk a little bit more about this at our leadership meeting on Monday. But what this does here, if you pick a Tuesday, if I want to get this package out to the council by the Tuesday prior, so they have a full week, and if we can do a little bit better than that, we will. But, but it's gonna take a lot of effort here. I need those packets, or your agenda bills, three Fridays in advance, even two Fridays in advance is quite enough time, because a huge burden is on me and my staff to have to read it, verify it, get back to you with questions, change language, alter it, look at the exhibits. And in all fairness to the council and the public that are gonna receive those, we want to make sure that they're well-prepared and that we've got at least an attempt to make them 100% flaw-free. So what we'll be doing is, we're gonna go back and look at our leadership meetings and have a more thorough agenda meeting, so that we are even further weeks in advance. We're gonna get on a planning calendar of what's coming up. This gives us enough time in the manager's office to revisit, should something stay on the agenda that's coming up in two or three meetings from now? Is it on the next agenda, which is about two and a half weeks out? The timing of those reports. So this will allow staff to complete the work and get it to council at least the Tuesday before the meeting. So the staff, so the council will have a complete package by at least a week in advance. So I'm asking council, will that be helpful? Will that be helpful enough?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. Thanks, Dave. Good idea.
If I, if I can, I, I've never had an issue with timing, but I'm respectful of my fellow council members that may not feel similarly to me. I, if I get the packet on Tuesday, not going to read it until the weekend anyway. But I, I know that there's the fluidity of information, and oftentimes, things change. I mean, there's, there's more often than not revisions to our packet on the Monday before a Tuesday meeting, leaving council to review kind of last-minute stuff anyway. So I guess I'm, I'm only offering up to my fellow council members that I think we have to give some degree of slack to staff on that, because if we're forcing their hand at producing packets well in advance of when we'll actually tackle the subject matter, they're likely to gain further information for particular topics and/or, you know, changes to the packet, so.
Thanks, Kristi. Pam, you've got your hand raised, and then, then we'll go to Chris, because it looked like Chris was gonna say something next. So we'll go Pam and then Chris.
Well, thank you. I want to thank staff. I know that all of this is a huge, heavy lift, and I appreciate the, you know, the drive to get it to us earlier. My personal request would be, is it possible to back up at least a draft packet to the Friday before? For me, sometimes the weekends are the only times that I'll have large chunks of time to sit down and dive deep into something, and to wait until the, the weekend before that Tuesday. Again, that's where I feel like, for some of these things, it's the first time I'm seeing it. It's the first time that I'm introduced to, you know, some of the details of a topic. And if I have to dive in and do some research before I even feel like I can ask questions, I don't feel like I have the right amount of time. So, you know, in terms of what can be done to get draft packs out that are draft, and can we use things like, you know, tracking revision changes, that type of stuff, to allow us to know what's changed? Certainly, we don't want to tie anyone's hands to be able to make updates at the last minute, but reviewing a change at the last minute is different than reviewing an entire topic in just a couple of days. So I think this is a great step in the, in the right direction to get it out sooner. But having an extra weekend for me would, would really make a big difference.
Thanks, Pam. Chris?
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is how many times we revise the agenda. And I think this part, this helps a bit, but also be mindful that the staff is going to be working since we have a meeting of essentially every week, they're going to be working multiple agenda items in in different stages of review. So their their workload is still still hard. So um, we may want to consider um improvements in our study session, not put so much uh uh data in the meeting and more conversational bullets. That may be an idea to help put some release so we can stay focused on the action meetings uh uh other than the uh s- study reviews. The other thing is is uh a look ahead would be helpful because one of the major disruptors of the agenda is things are not on the agenda. People don't and and when it shows up the Thursday before, they say, oh, well, what about that agenda? And so we're there's late agenda item add. So if we had like a three meeting look ahead of agenda items, council can give staff feedback that, oh, what about that item? Where why isn't that showing up now? Or um, when is that going to show up? And can we see that in week two or week three or week one in the look ahead? So I would recommend we use at least a three-week look ahead to accompany this to help um reduce it once again, changes in the agenda so that the council could immediately give feedback without the packet, just the agenda items themselves. So I think that would help us with our planning and avoid rework and reposting of agendas.
Thanks, Chris. So you're offering a few things that I want, you know, it'd be nice to kind of come to some closure here, too. So um, Dave, I perhaps you could respond to that. And then there was um David who wanted to say something, too, in a moment, but how about you do a little bit of response to some of those ideas?
In in response to um Pam's uh r- request, um, I I I believe I'm optimistic that we'll be able to do that. I I'm hopeful that council will acknowledge, and I and I hear that tone that they are. But but staff will need the acknowledgement that we will have many agendas in play at one time. Because the staff hasn't heard um everything from me and what my uh request will be of them. But it in in this next, let's say, a ninety-day or so transition time, it it backs them up because they are worked in a culture of getting reports out and for manager review just prior to the agenda. Now we're going to push that way back. So that means there will be a backlog, and I need to be understanding that it's going to take some time to get those reports reports queued up so that we can all acknowledge well that where where they will start to fit on the calendar. So as we start to prepare these multiple uh these lines of the agenda bill moving down, there will be these different agendas in play. Uh, we'll have like February seconds coming up. So reports will have already been done. There may be some adjustments. Then we'll be looking at February sixteenth. Those reports will be coming in and should be here for me to start to review very soon if this was in play. Then we've got the March, whatever meeting date that is. So um, as we work and do this, the system that we've tried to put in play the last several weeks was to get some draft things out to the council. But and we should be able to do that. Just know that it's going to take us a little bit of time to adjust our scheduling and our calendars. As to Chris's question, it really comes up, um, I think, in our next uh PowerPoint slide. And that is the planning calendar. So um, if I can just wait a second, uh, uh, Chris, Wendy, uh, and counsel on that particular issue, I'd like to get closure here, and then we will move right into addressing what Councilman Ross has just brought up.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate kind of separating it to make sure. So what we're seeing here is that instead of getting it to you like that Thursday or so before, right? Um, at a minimum, they're aiming for getting it to you a week before, right? The Tuesday before your meeting. Heard Pam ask if it could be even slid to the Friday before. And so what I'm hearing from Dave, right? And what I tried to write in there is just this knowing that there's several things at play. It's going to take a little bit of time, but they are going to try to get maybe some draft reports out to you so that you feel as ready as possible. But is this the agreement that what's here on the slide? That it's, you know, at a minimum, they're trying to get everything to you the Tuesday before the meeting? And Karen, please.
Yeah, I'm I'm with Christie on this one. If it comes out Monday, Tuesday, I I don't read it till the weekend anyway, so it doesn't matter, but I understand some people want more time. So I won't. I mean, I won't get to it. I'm afraid if it comes out too early, I think there's going to be more and more changes to it. So that would be my only question, and I think that we just need to kind of work through with staff and ask them, you know, how that would work, how that works for them, because I know stuff just changes the closer we get to the meeting. So um, that would be my my question with that. And the agenda packets, yeah, I, you know, I I'm just as surprised as everybody else is on what's on the agenda. So I'm I'm anxious for that topic to be discussed.
Great. I I know that David, you wanted to weigh in on something or offer a comment, perhaps?
Yeah, I I just wanted to offer that that in addition to what's being discussed here, we we have uh several requirements that we we need to conform to um with regard to public noticing, with regard to noticing of other agencies. And also um scenarios where issues are required to go through the one of our boards or commissions. It it this, i- if we're required to um present the information in a in a final draft packet, if you will, earlier, then that will be adding time between when those meetings are occurring and will ultimately add potentially several weeks on to an issue. And I I'm happy to work on this and try and nail down exactly how the the calendar looks and and what the requirements are, but I just want to to point out that there are certain things that move through uh as legislative items that require planning commission review, for example, and planning commission recommendation. And i- if there's more time required between when the planning commission makes recommendation and actually signs the the recommendation that they issue and when the packet is issued, um, uh, th- then there's just going to be some additional time, and it might take things longer, just practically, to move through um ultimately to when it reaches the council.
I think David makes a very good point here, and this is the type of uh latitude and acknowledgement I would hope from the council with that understanding that that some of these items, we will try to flag it, but the council needs to expect that some things are going to be updated for the latest information because that does complicate things in in David's world, dealing with eh the planning commission and the legal requirements and the council's um desired requirements that the planning commission weigh in in changing those scheduled. As we adopt to this, over a period of time, we can work into that level of sensitivity. But that may take us pretty much the whole year because our cap planning planning calendar is so packed with important events and changing the culture of how we do things is not as easy as just changing the dates on a piece of paper. So I I think uh it's important that we acknowledge the the complexity of what uh David has to deal with on this issue. So just know that some of those items, in fact, will change. But at least you will have um a packet in advance that you can look at at your leisure or your timing. And if it's an extra heavy one, not everything is going to be required to be updated. But just that acknowledgement that there are updates and on land use, planning commission items, you should expect that those items will be updated if there is that other uh requirement involved.
Thanks, Dave. Pam, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, um, I think these are uh great points, and I I definitely appreciate and acknowledge the complexity here. Um, I would offer that, um, you know, from a, you know, I I kind of look at this as as part of what I do at work, which is release management, where we talk about it in terms of trains. So we may have three or four trains that are going at one time. Uh, and to to kind of train the organization and and when I say organization, I mean all of us, right? Council as well. In that, you know, we have trains, which are the meetings, and those trains are on a schedule. And you have certain things that uh if it's ready, it's going to make that train. And if it's not ready, it catches the next one. And I realize that there are some things that have dates that will need to, you know, uh circumvent that, or or, you know, we have to pot, you know, emergency stop the train because this thing has to hop on. Uh, but those should be the exceptions. The other thing is is that to to recognize that if you have something to Councilmember Ross's point that, you know, three, three meetings out, it it it's planned for, but to David's point, it it is going through some part of the planning commission process or something. I don't know that I need to be served up some special version of something, maybe just showing me, here's what the schedule is for the next four meetings. And this topic that's two or three or four meetings out currently is here, right? It's it's going through planning commission. And if you click here, you can see the latest document. It doesn't have to be served up special. That way we can see where it is. We can see what's happening with it. And you don't have to um do extra work. You can just direct us to what the latest and greatest is, and that cuts down on all of that version management, version control, uh, and really helps you to manage us and our expectations to say, look, if if something comes up and delays it, it misses this train and it's going to catch the next one. So, you know, I would say, looking, you know, looking at that kind of release management and and sort of version control management things, I don't think these are things you guys need to develop on your own. They are complicated, but there's a lot out there, uh, especially in this area with the tech companies where we where we have, you know, addressed this and and made some things to make that easier for folks. So.
Okay, I think that's a great intro to the next slide, Mike. Uh, this is a tool that has been available uh to the council that the clerk puts out with each agenda. Uh, but I think w- we can um update it. So Mike, why don't you take us through what we were looking at here and what our thoughts were? And if you can address that to Councilman Ross and and uh Councilmember Stewart's comments.
Right. So the the feedback that we heard in the pre-retreat interview that Janelle put together is there at the top that the the council generally finds the planning calendar helpful, but it may not always be u- utilized effectively or in a way that's easily accessible. Um, there was a feeling that all not all the relevant issues were included or or the calendar was uh not always updated. And uh, there was a feeling that it would be helpful if staff could provide recommendations on how long a project would take. So the the initial response here, and of course, like with the previous item, we're open to feedback, is in regards to the relevant issues not being on the agenda, I think it will be helpful when the council approves this year's work plan to then go through and populate every meeting date, you know, with the the work plan that's been approved. So all of the relevant projects, all the priority projects should be reflected from uh February through the end of the year. Uh, once we have that work plan confirmed by council. The, as Dave mentioned, in regards to accessibility of the calendar, it is a little bit tricky because it's on Google Docs right now. So what we do is send it out with every agenda packet. It's it's a link at the bottom. It admittedly, it's easy to miss. So I would recommend bookmarking that page for easier access. And if that, if you need something further, we can talk with IT. Potentially, we could make a shortcut on your I iPad's home screen or or laptop or something to that effect. The the comment regarding uh if staff could provide recommendations on how long a project would take, we are, we've already updated the calendar to include instructions for staff to show the time estimates next to each item. Uh, it will take a little bit of time for that to get updated as staff work through the calendar and and add their times, but I just know that that is in progress. And I I I recognize the usefulness of that when our 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 calendars are so full. So that's kind of what we were thinking uh as far as responses to this piece of feedback here.
Thank you for that, Mike. Um, and if we, council can take a look at this, I I I think it's a useful tool. As Mike said, we can make modifications to it and make it easier for you to access, but it it does provide some vision of what is coming up. And and this ties directly to the work plan that you're you're doing and actually gets into more detail. So um, in my meetings with staff, we'll be visiting this and using this tool constantly as we look at, here's the next agenda that's going to happen uh next week. And then here's the one that's happening um two weeks after that. Let's be looking at the reports. We're going to discuss it. How's that reflected on the calendar? Oh, you know what? I I'm not ready to come on February sixteenth, for example, so I'm going to drop that. Can I move it to the next calendar date? Uh, yes or no? And we'll be updating this, and this would be, I think, a very useful tool. A tool we'll use a lot, and I think the top council can look a lot, uh, use a lot to see what's coming. So we'd like some feedback.
Wendy, if I if I can, I have I have a comment. I what I find to be um would be more helpful, and what we used to do is we linked the long-term calendar on the packet instead of the email that comes with the packet because it's far more accessible and easily found um both by council and the public if it's a part of the packet itself. It always used to be a right on the the bottom of the packet. We also used to have a parking lot, too, um, which we don't have anymore, but that might just make it easier and more accessible for council to find if it's literally part of the agenda packet rather than the email.
Oh, I think it's a great suggestion, and maybe that just got lost in the translation and change of personnel. But um, Mike, Lita, can we make that happen?
Certainly, easy to do. We can just export the current snapshot of the calendar uh and attach it at the bottom of the agenda. No problem at all.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
And on the calendar itself, uh, what do you all think about that?
So I have a question. So um, my question would be, so can we rely on when we look at the date, is that what will then be on the agenda? Is that what we can rely on to be what the agenda is going to be?
I would say conditionally that depending on how far out it is, if.
Right, right. I mean, I I mean, I would say, though, if I'm looking at, you know, a week away from, you know, the packet coming out, and I can look at, pull it up, and that's next week's, and I can say ninety-five percent, that's what the agenda is going to be.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll also point out that some items are listed as tentative, and that's maybe where there's a little bit more uncertainty around whether the item will be coming or moving just due to factors uh that we're waiting on.
I'm just trying to clarify because some people seem to think that there's a a magic to how something gets on the agenda and and I don't, I'd I'd like to know what there is if there is one, if there is.
No. We we've we've used this quite a bit. We use it in our uh leadership meetings. And we, I usually cover a meeting or two in advance, at least a meeting in advance, not just the current one. Any other thoughts from council?
Yeah, not to not to pile on, but um to David's point earlier, uh, for these topics, like being able to maybe note on there, like when a particular topic might be going to planning commission. So if there's something that's further out and it's scheduled for planning commission on a particular date, that might be helpful, too, because then we'll know that there's potential for discussion and maybe a lot of churn. So I don't want to pile too much on to you guys, but that kind of information might also help us. And the public, too.
I think that might just be a a matter of um abstracting it, putting in a different color ink. But we'll we'll take note of that. Do you have any feedback on that, David?
Yeah.
One thing I will caution Dave is is not to use different colors. That doesn't pass the accessibility test. So people who have um vision challenges uh often can't discern between the colors, and when you use certain colors, you change the contrast. So from an accessibility, just I caution using too many colors, especially green. So from an accessibility, just I caution using too many colors, especially green. That can be a real challenge. People are colorblind or have other vision issues, so.
All right, thank you for that.
I'm a color change person though.
Well, maybe they're both, right? Maybe there's a sweet spot between showing like an icon, you know, an asterisk, like you said, actually using the word tentative like you have there and then using color coding for those that, that would be useful for too. So multiple pieces. So great ideas. Who is going to say, who's going to talk next? I'm just going to try to capture that.
Yeah, so in, in, in response to that, you know, this is a great conversation. I really appreciate all these comments. You know, we, we as a department, thank you to Kelly Hildy and Miriam Leitner, have developed a, what we call a legislative review guide. And we have a, a very comprehensive guide to how a legislative item moves from the point of conception to the point of it daylighting to the council. And we, we do have these things laid out on multiple layers and levels where we look at if, if it's, in the same sense, Councilmember Stewart, that you mentioned of, there was a term you called, you know, we, we allow, release management, I think is what you said. And that definitely resonates with us because we, we actually have these things mapped out very closely with regard to staffing, how much time we have in an average work week, how many people we have working on these things. And we're able to then understand how much we can take on as a group. And usually we've mapped it out to the point where we are at 100% capacity. So we're, we're trying to do as much as we possibly can with the staffing that we have. And, and so it wouldn't be too complicated for us to know when those dates of planning commission would be. We, it's possible maybe, and maybe this is an idea, that there's a link that's added into the agenda that shows the full trajectory of the project. And it's sort of that Microsoft project sort of analysis that shows how it, how it moves through the different groups. And then you'd be able to click on that and you'd see what's, what the project requires. And I think that provides some awareness that it, it is pretty complicated to get these things to the point where they're ready for screen time with the council. And there are a lot of steps that go into these. And I think that also helps with awareness that if, if you're asking us to take something else on, that we're at 100% capacity. We've mapped out our workforce and our, and our work hours and something's going to get bumped. And one of the things we ask of the council as part of this conversation is that we develop a work plan and we stick to the work plan, understanding that there are, there's a certain percentage of our time that needs to be reactive to things that come up because we can't control the world. But that, that a certain percentage of our time is, is devoted to predictable work plan items that need to get to the council and need to stick to those timelines if they're to stay on schedule. An example of this is the wireless communication facilities code that we've been working on, that the planning commission has seen a lot of. You know, we, we were about to finish it up in the la, in the, in December when the, the TV 21 didn't work. And we had to, to continue the public hearing into the new year. And that adds, you know, three, four months to a project just because of that delay. So, you know, there, there's a lot of background work that has to occur, public noticing, all those things that have to get restarted when something gets derailed from its, its, uh, its original work plan.
Thank you for that, David. Any other thoughts or comments on this? And we can move to the other one because we still have a few more items that council brought up that I wanted to address.
I think we're good. Thanks, Dave. I don't see anybody waving their hands.
Mike, next slide.
Yep, here we are.
Okay, um, this was, we got comments back that in general, the mayor gets to meet with the city manager more times than I do. And so I thought about that. So the, the feedback was several council members have noted that the mayor meets one-on-one meetings or has one-on-one meetings with the city manager, but the council is only provided bi-weekly meetings. Bi-weekly meetings for me have worked in every city that I've been with because I try to make myself very flexible and amenable to any other additional things. But we wanted regular standing meetings. So part of my response is the city manager has pre-scheduled meetings every other week with council members. He's always flexible to meet more frequently if an issue arises. And certainly please contact Debbie. Some of you have called me direct. Some of you have emailed me direct. Dave, I'd like to talk to you about something. The mayor meets frequently with the manager for a couple of reasons due to that leadership position on the council. This helps me and has always helped me since I first became a city manager many, many years ago. It helps keep me to have a finger on the pulse of the political window. And regular check-ins help me stay informed and focused on issues. I'm a bureaucrat. I mean, I, I, I ride this fence between the political world and the administrative world. And you know what they say about people who sit on the fence? And if you don't, I'll tell you some other time. So don't get off color here. But I, I don't create policy, but I help the council with policy. And on the other side, I've got to keep the operational side going to meet our mandates and follow the law and do those things administratively. And, and the mayor helps me, meeting with her, touching base with the mayor, helps me stay in touch with that political side. So we have regular check-in meetings. They're scheduled weekly, but I also meet with the mayor and the deputy mayor to review the agenda before every council meeting. So that adds to it and it often suffices. Because I have a standing meeting with the mayor, we don't always meet, but we have a time on the calendar so that it does, doesn't get crowded out of my calendar nor the mayor's. And then it also just helps me to have a primary council liaison due to the heavily booked calendar. So that's my feedback on it. I don't know when I've not been available. But if we got into scheduling meetings weekly, it, it, it's a very stressful schedule to try to manage and keep everything going with all of the meetings and communications I have with staff. So that's, that's my, I wanted to bring that forward. That was part of your feedback and my response. So I'm, I'm certainly open to any dialogue the council wants to have on that so that I can improve how I communicate.
Well, I wanted to add to that.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I just thought it was an interesting, interesting comment. Because I think I've had a one-on-one with you once this month. But that being said, we both have busy schedules, so we put it on the calendar. So if we didn't catch up during the week, we had a particular time that worked. And a lot of times we don't need it because, you know, we've talked some other time during the week. And, you know, I'm not one of those who, you know, like other council members, that's going to call you on a weekend. So, you know, I'm not going to call you in the evening. I'm not going to call you on the weekend in particular, or on a holiday. So, you know, I always saved it for a Wednesday if I needed to. So I just find that really an interesting comment.
No, I'll, I'll acknowledge that. You've, you've helped me immensely with that.
I'll, I'll comment just for the sake of filling airtime here. You know, I, I, like Karen, participate in the agenda meetings. So I'm, you know, touching base with the city manager on a more regular basis than, you know, probably the rest of the council is. But I think when we have those meetings, when other issues come up, I know, you know, Karen and I have had discussions about, you know, hey, this is a topic to fill the rest of the council in on. And so I think, you know, I think we do a decent job of, you know, identifying subject matter to which that's outside potentially of, you know, agenda topics and that we pull the council in on. And then, you know, I have standing meetings with Dave. I think, you know, it sounds like you, I'm not aware if you have standing meetings with all of us or not. I, I think sometimes we utilize our time, Dave. Sometimes we don't. And I think the last one we had, this was what we talked about was, you know, what's going on at the retreat? How are we, you know, kind of forging forward with this? So.
Yes, I, I have standing meetings to answer your question. I have standing meetings with the council, all members of the council. That was a, a sort of a date and time of their choosing. And, and all have been flexible when my calendars have changed. So we, we try to accomplish that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if, if there's concern amongst council on subject matter and, and I don't, I don't know where or if there, there is, but you know, if something comes up through the course of the conversations and one-on-one meetings that rise to the level of, you know, making the rest of the council privy to, I think, you know, Dave, you know, I know we get looped in on emails oftentimes to, to that end. And, you know, when stuff is brought up maybe to one council member is, is, you know, just if it's not already happening, and I'm not saying it's not, but I just, you know, with the rest of the council in, I think, you know, as a common practice, I, I see a lot of emails come through from Dave, you know, looping in the full council on subject matter. But, you know, the same goes for council if you're having a discussion with Dave about something that, you know, back to our communication and the rules, then all the rest of the council members in on it.
Yeah, I've always tried to maintain the philosophy that, well, just trying to be very communicative with council about things that are of benefit to everyone. And, and, and not everything is, but I try to err on the side of over-communication. And I know I'll miss things now and then, and I can be, certainly make some errors. But there's no intention to hold information back.
I think we all make errors sometimes, Dave. I mean, I, in our conversation last night, just as an example to out myself, you know, I had a meeting and I, I had good intentions of, you know, reminding my fellow council members or at least alerting them that I had the meeting and then I forgot. And that, and it was just last week. It was late last week. But I sent an email last night saying, hey, look, I had this meeting. Just, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Well, if we have a question on meetings, I found Dave to be phenomenally responsive. That's city manager, Rudy, that is, to be phenomenally responsive on a, a need or a request for either a phone conversation or an actual in-person meeting, which we're obviously trying to limit with this COVID. But if, if somebody feels that they need more meetings or a more weekly meeting with, with the city manager, for whatever reason, I'm sure he'd be amenable to work with you for whatever you need on a, a meeting thing. So I'm not sure what, again, I'm a little, I'm not sure what the, the comment means, the feedback means. I found Dave to be accessible, as are the mayor and as are the deputy mayor if a meeting is needed for any reason. So if you need more meetings, for whatever reason, request it. It makes sense that the mayor may need a little more access with the deputy mayor because they are, are working more on the agenda side. So I'd say if you, if you feel that you're not getting the meetings you need, just raise your hand and, and reach out to the city manager and I'm sure he would work something out with you.
Thanks, Ken. Yeah, I think that that's really what, what the response in essence is, is what it's offering here. So there's a recognition that that was some feedback. The response is, if, if you'd like some more time, let's make that happen. So we'll just kind of leave it to the council member to request that. I believe that that's really the, the response here. And, and does that work for everybody? It, it seems to appear to, to work. At least that's what I'm noticing.
I want to be flexible and be responsive. I, I, I want to stay away from allocating hours every week because it can really tie up the, the count, the, the calendar. But certainly if you need to meet on something, I, I always try to be available or set up a call.
And I, can I make a statement here real quick? And I apologize, first I want to apologize for my in and out. I am still working and I've had a couple of emergencies th, this morning already. And I think there'll be another one coming up at 12 o'clock. But so first, that's why my video has been going off. I'm dealing with some stuff here at my work. Second is, on this issue, I just want to know, I am not in the majority of the council identifying a gap in communication between the city council members and the city manager. All right, I have good communication with him. I meet with him bi-weekly. And I enjoy my time working with him and getting updated on things that are going on with the council. And I'm not one of the several council members that noted that the mayor was having a weekly meeting. I know that the mayor and the deputy mayor have an agenda meeting every week with the city manager to set up our Tuesday meeting. So, and I'll just say this too, I'm very comfortable and appreciative of the feedback that we get from him on, on his updates. So can they, I mean, there's been a couple of times where they've come a little late. But look, we all know we're dealing with a pandemic and we're dealing with a lot of other stuff that's going on personally outside of our own jobs and being on the council and stuff. So my only ask would be that show a little grace. So thank you for time and listening to my comments.
Okay, and part of that, you know, is the, Janelle was taking down notes. Maybe that was the way she termed it. But to your, to your point about, I think you're referring to the bi-weekly report. If I can transition, if, if there's any more comment here, it's fine. Otherwise, we'll go to the final slide to try to improve communications or cover the discussion. Mike, can you go ahead and slide to the next one? A majority of the council identified gaps in communication between the city council members as well as between the city manager and council. The majority felt there was a restriction of information that comes from the mayor and the city manager. Response, the city manager would like to know council's communication preferences. One of, what I started years ago, when I first became a city manager, as I, you know, emails weren't the predominant way of communications. And, and they've grown and been enhanced more. There were some managers who got into blogs and all of that sort of thing. I've, I've never been a highly technical or e-communicator. But certainly the use of emails has become quite predominant. And there are different councils that I've worked with that have varying degrees of how they want to be communicated with. And this council uses emails a lot. And, and that's fine. But I came up with a, a bi-weekly report. And we have the newsletter. We're trying to get information out on. And I, I think those are all helpful. But I want to know, is the bi-weekly report helpful? And is this a, a good or the best mode of communication for council? I've heard feedback from staff that, in fact, they felt that my communication here at City Hall, you know, using some of their words, far exceeds that of other city manager offices and how they communicated. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction, but I know there's always room for improvement. So number one, is the bi-weekly report helpful? Staff finds it helpful because, you know, there are often significant issues that come up that get a lot of the communication focused on them, whether it's legal issues or high-profile issues. But there are other projects that are going on or events that have occurred. And I don't want something to fall through the cracks. So I created this reporting mechanism years ago and tried to adapt it here. But maybe it could be expanded upon. years ago and tried to adapt it here, but maybe it could be expanded upon. I don't know, we, we might be able to get something out on a, a, a weekly basis. And sometimes these things have slid because so much is going on or something happened in my life and I wasn't able to pull it together and, and staff has picked up the slack for me. So a couple of questions there. I'd like to know what your communication preferences are. I'd like some feedback on the bi-weekly report. Because sometimes I, I have gotten reported back that it's not read. I, I don't want staff to contribute and for me to do this if it's not going to be used. But I certainly will continue or expand upon it if it is. So, I mean.
The city manager, I have a little input there. Number one is, again, on this city manager communication feedback and response. I'm not one of the majority quoted that feels there's gaps. Number two, I, I do read the bi-weekly all the time. And number three, I have had multiple instances of people requesting council members saying, I'm not in the loop. I don't know about this. How come I don't know? And the response is, well, it's in the bi-weekly. Or the response is, it was in an email as of X date. Have you read it? And the response is, um, well, no, but I want to know about it. So in the, I understand the, that some council members may feel that there's gaps in communications. And obviously, if that's the case, we need to work on that and improve that. Make sure that there is nobody that's feeling that they're not in the loop. But as a first step, I would highly encourage to use the existing modalities of communication on these subjects, which is the bi-weekly and the newsletter and the emails that consistently go out to make sure that you're fully apprised of what has been communicated out to you. And many times in great detail. So make sure you're up on all those things. And then if you still feel that there's a lack of communication, let's address it on a case-by-case basis so that we can correct it going forwards. But again, there has been multiple instances of somebody saying, I'm out of the loop. And I, I know the information that they're looking for has been disseminated in one of these modalities. So that would be the first step that I would take. Thanks.
So Dave, I, I have, you know, just food for thought. There is a place on our agendas as well for city manager reports. And, and maybe I just revert back to what I've known, but that's typically something that is an attachment, an actual like written report. And so maybe there's a way to parse out some of the information that's going in the bi-weekly reports as part of the council packet. That way, it's, it's at least coming a little bit more frequently. That would still be bi-weekly. But if it were attached in the council agenda packets, because, you know, on a study session, we don't do council reports or city manager reports. But that way, if your bi-weekly report that you're emailing out to council is also part of the packet, that's a second opportunity for council members to note it and read it. But then it's also an opportunity kind of just for the general public to kind of know what's going on in there. And, and I'm not trying to like, you know, double your work. I'm assuming that's, you know, the subject matter to which is in your bi-weekly report is, is typically stuff that would be, you know, we could disseminate to the general public as well. So maybe that's an opportunity to just copy your bi-weekly report into the council packet. Double the fun for council to read it or double the opportunities.
I, I, I think that's a good point. And, and there are times that, you know, and it's fluctuated with me. I, I'll keep that in mind because then it will perhaps help trigger me to bullet point a couple of things. And I, and I've tried to do that when I thought it was relevant. And if I found that if I don't do that, because I, I don't want to speak any more than what I need to. That's the council's platform and it is an opportunity for me that I, I need to take advantage of when necessary. But I'll often revert to, no, I think I've communicated everything out, so I don't have a report. But I'll, I'll pay more attention to that and making that an attachment. That, that's not difficult at all.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Christie. Go ahead, Pam. I see your hand.
Yeah, I, I'd like to kind of add on to what Christie just said. I think adding it as a report, Dave, you don't have to read it. I think Christie does a great job of having reports and, you know, people can read them. So it, it doesn't require you to speak if you add it as a, as a report, but it does provide it transparency out to the public. So I think that's a great idea. I, I like the reports. So I like getting your bi-weekly reports. I might suggest for email. So I, I like email. You had asked, you know, what's our communication preferences? I like the emails because, because I do have a day job. It allows me to consume the information when I have time to sit down and focus. One of the things as a best practice that I try to do is really focusing on the subject lines in the emails to make it easier for people to find information. So being able to put in the subject line, is this just an FYI? Or is action required or, you know, immediate attention? Adding some of those, you know, taglines, I'll often put that in the front of, of the email subject with a colon and then the actual subject. If it's an email that you're sort of forwarding on and maybe the subject line of the original thread wasn't super clear, helping to, you know, make it a more concise and pertinent subject line for council because we're just hopping up the after there have been lots of conversations. And again, not to try to pile work on, on others, but that can really just help, again, communication in general. And those are best practices that we try to implement at Microsoft where, you know, sometimes we may get hundreds or even thousands of emails in a day. So those are just some, some things that I would throw out that would, you know, help me and I found have helped others at work.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate the, the thought of using that subject line, modifying it. Because I'll, I'll try to put something in, in the email, like no action required or FYI, FYI, I do that quite a bit. But putting in the subject line, I, I acknowledge that, that, that would be helpful. It would be helpful to me because of all of the emails I do get. So I'll, I'll try to make that more of a practice. What I have done here, you know, I used to summarize emails or email strings. And I, I've just, I'll just provide the whole email string for a couple of reasons. And, and I hope the council is appreciative of it. Sometimes there's valuable information in there. But for me, it keeps me from having to take the time to summarize it, not picking up all the port points because I, I, I don't want to have to allocate time to doing that. And it also of, for you all, there's often some complex points in there or things that I might leave out of the summary, and it helps with the transparency and to help you understand what some of the other background is. So I do try to include the whole email string.
And I, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate having that, although I, I would say like if there is action required or there's an urgent part of it, to just say, you know, here's a, a quick one or two liner that says, here's a, a, a long thread on this very complicated subject. Maybe the two items of note are the following or something like that, just so that we know what it is you think we should be looking at and have the option to dive as deep into the, into the muck as we want to. But if there is something you think, you know, is pertinent to an agenda item or something that we may be getting questions about, that one or two liner of just, you know, why did you forward it to us? Like, hey, I'm forwarding this to you just so you know, nothing big, no big deal, or I'm forwarding this to you because we started to get a lot of calls about X. A, a quick one-liner would might also help, but I appreciate getting the thread and I, I appreciate your best practice on that one.
How does that land, Dave, with what I was just hearing you offering about not wanting to summarize it?
I'm good with that. I try to do that now. But I'll focus on that a little bit more.
Okay, anything else in this area? Are you good with those two modes? Still bi-weekly, not changing the, the timing of that? Good? Okay.
Okay, Wendy, I'll, I'll hand it back to you then, because that's the extent of the PowerPoint and responses that I had directly to the communications.
Okay, well, I just, I think it's about time for a break. I think you've done some great work this morning so far, so nice job. I see that it's 10:46. Let's give you a good 15 minutes. So can you come back at 11:01 and we'll keep going? So thanks, everybody. And I'm going to pause recording. Excellent. We're getting there. Welcome back, everybody.
Wendy, this is Pam. I'm back, but I'm having a snack and I don't know that anybody wants to watch me eat, so that's why my camera's off. I'll turn it on in a minute.
Good, thank you. All right, since we have all of council back, which is awesome and most of the rest of you. I wanted to, before we leave the communication conversation, which I think that you've done a wonderful job of talking about some key things, generating some new ideas and some agreements moving forward to strengthen communication. Is there anything, you know, I wanted to move you into starting to discuss the work plan and priorities. But I didn't want to leave that subject if there was just something else that has not been talked about that was really important for you to kind of bring forward during that topic time. So in particular, I'm looking to the six council members, if there's just something that hasn't been touched on that you really need this time to talk with your peers about. That's good. Nope. Okay, sweet. Nice work. We're shifting gears now and moving into, again, another major area that you need to discuss. And Mike has created, I think, a nice clean way of presenting this. So I'm going to turn it over to you and let me know how I can support the conversation. And actually, let me check in for a moment. Sorry, Mike, as you're getting things ready. We are about an hour before noon. And I know one of the things that I said that we would loop back out or loop back into. Do you want to take an additional 15 minutes for deliberation time over lunch? Or do you still need the full hour? Because actually, we're kind of back on track. We were planning a full hour before lunch and then afterwards. I kind of wanted to get the pulse of council. Would you like to go to 12:15 and then break for lunch? Or do you want to break around 12ish for lunch? You want an hour or 45 minutes? What's your preference?
12 works best for me. Yeah, I have a meeting. I have to be at a 12.
Great. Well, then there you go. Thank you very much for at least considering it. And thanks for letting us know what your needs are. We'll go to 12. And Mike, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Wendy, and good morning, council. For any members of the public, once again, my name is Mike Sugg. I'm the senior management analyst here at the city of Sammamish in the city manager's office. And I'll just start with a brief recap. Yesterday, we walked through the organization of the draft 2021 work plan and priorities document and some of the key questions to think about as you were reviewing the document. We talked about how the work plan was council-focused, meaning it primarily includes items that will come to council this year. And we also reviewed the fields in the work plan spreadsheets, including what the terms critical and priority mean in the context of this document. You'll recall that the priorities we've shown are based on staff assumptions and have not yet been reviewed by council. And as part of this, we looked at the one-page summary sheet of draft priorities, which show how the council's pre-retreat input translated into the work plan. All of this serving as a starting point to prompt discussion today. In an effort to conserve time, I won't repeat the full walkthrough of the layout of the plan that we had yesterday. But if there are any remaining questions on how the plan is organized or something you'd like me to repeat, please stop me at any point. I hope everybody had a chance to take a peek at the work plan attachment and think about how, what you'd like to ask regarding those discussion prompts. And unless there are any questions, I think we can start by jumping into the work plan and our first discussion prompt. And again, please do interrupt me if you have any questions or comments. When I'm sharing my screen, I may not be able to see who's interested in speaking. So if you'll give me a moment to pull up the spreadsheets.
And I know, Mike, as you're doing that, I think that you were kind of going to have a pattern where you were just going to pull up one chunk of it and say, what questions are on this, this page? So rather than have people bounce around through the whole document, just in a nice orderly way so that we can all be following along, we'll be asking if you have questions in this particular category at a time. Am I correct about that, Mike?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and I guess a higher level note about the overall organization of this conversation. My thinking was we would start with the first discussion prompt. You know, what is, does the council have any questions about these work plan priorities? And rather than jumping back and forth between sheets, we'll just talk about each sheet individually and your questions on that one and kind of move through those. And then after that, we'll move to our second discussion prompt, which is, do we need to make any adjustments? Do we need to add items, remove items, modify items? Once we've settled on that, we can start to look at the priorities. And then kind of confirmation at the end of whether or not council's comfortable with it, with what we've all talked about and agreed upon. So that's kind of the organization that will follow. And like I said, our first discussion prompt was to ask whether the council has any questions about the proposed work plan items. We'll start with this and let me zoom in here.
Mike, can I ask a quick question before you jump in? Because this is not the first slide in our packet. So, so that we're not, I'm not sure what order you're going in, but we may be scrolling in our packet to try and catch up to where you are. This is actually the second item. The first one has project priorities listed, not focus areas. So I didn't, I didn't know, I just wanted to be able to follow along with my packets and so that's where my notes are.
Apologies, I should have clarified. We will start with, and what I'm, what I have up on the screen here is the editable spreadsheet version. So if we need to make any adjustments or notes, we can do that. But I will follow the order that's in the attachment in the packet. We're just starting with the table after the priority sheet and we'll come back to that priority sheet at the end.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. I hope the sheet is big enough. I'm going to try and make it a little bit larger. So we'll start here with our first focus area, which is communication and engagement. It's obviously quite brief. We have our first item here, community visioning, which I believe was added following discussions at last year's retreat, as you all may remember. And we also have a website redesign project led by IT. So pausing here, do we have any questions about these two projects? And as we all know, we have relevant staff online. And as we all know, we have relevant staff online to assist if there are questions. Wendy, maybe you could, oh, thank you.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, Pam, I see her hand raised. Go for it.
Yeah. So one, thank you. I I definitely love the idea of us doing a lot of early outreach to the community. I'd love to know if we have any, like, at this point, is it really just, do we agree that this is something we need to do? Do you want feedback on, you know, if there are specific things we're looking for? And I'll just give an example for that first one with the community visioning. I would love to see hire a third-party company to make sure that we develop a survey that's done in a way that that doesn't have any bias in it and talk about the different ways we can get community feedback from everyone. So it isn't just digital that we're hitting up people that may not be online, those types of things. So I don't know how deep we want to dive at this point.
I think all feedback is helpful at this point. If you, if you do have any questions or suggestions, yes, we're, we're certainly open to hearing those.
Yeah, Mike, Ken here. Hey, hey, I got, um, I've seen over the years of just numerous, numerous, numerous studies and outreach programs and and on discussions with residents. Would it be possible to pull up a, some type of database or some type of list on this visioning idea, sharing community identified priorities type stuff? Could we pull that up? And go ahead and use that as a master before we go out and do a whole bunch more? Because there's a lot of this data, I think, that's fairly recent that we already have captured that we don't need to go back. So could we pull that up and review what we have and determine if we can use that as a basis?
If David Pyle or Kelly is on the line, would you have a response to that? Can we use some of the survey feedback we've gathered from, you know, other areas of surveying that we've done in the city of our community to kind of inform this this item?
This is David Pyle. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's essential to this project is first doing an inventory sort of of what is the vision of the past as stated in the comp plan, what work went into that? What what other points of data collection have occurred in the community since then? And then what do we need to move forward? I don't know if I could have Kelly chime in for a minute about what the budget for this was. I can't recall offhand. And whether or not we had intended to bring on board a third-party consultant. I think there were different versions of that idea floating around, and I was just curious what Kelly's current thinking on that was.
Um, yes, we, City Council did approve a budget for twenty-one of sixty-five thousand dollars to do this work. I think it's a good idea to have a starting place as suggested by council member Gamblin. And then to review that information, bring it to the city council prior to moving forward with the scope of work with a consultant to present that information, get your feedback. Do we need to refine some of the questions we need to ask and then move forward with that project?
Thank you. I see Christie has her hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure as we embark on community visioning in preparation for the comp plan that it is statistically valid. I think that is is critical because otherwise we have people in the community who have a vested interest in potentially a certain outcome. Then they self-opt in. And I think it's really, really important for us to have a statistically valid community visioning project so that we have an honest opinion from from our community.
Yeah, I I agree. And that's really what I was getting at is that it, we need to have the outreach go to all the different parts of the community, which is why obviously lots of people are online and that's great, but that tends to be a, the same group of people that we hear from over and over. So I want to make sure we really get that breadth of of feedback and that we are touching on all the points. And that's why I feel like a a company who does this, not that our staff isn't great, but there are ways to write surveys, and it is very difficult to write a survey without bias. And that's why hiring an expert to do that, I think, is really critical.
And if I may add to the conversation, I, I think we should also address the youth board and the youth of the city as well on the vision of the city. Thank you.
I'm gonna attempt to capture the essence of what I'm hearing. I do know that other people are writing that down just so that you can see. So these are the pieces that I thought that I heard in that.
And the seniors.
And seniors. Got it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And if, and if I may just, I'm sorry to barge in again. I appreciate the idea of the the youth and the seniors capturing that as long as that's captured in a statistically valid method. I think the deputy mayor's point was really on on track that people, we tend to hear the input of a particular group that has a agenda, and and that's fine, people have their agendas, that are much more vocal. But and and it's easy to believe that that is, give that more weight than whatever number of residents as opposed to the whole population weight that it should get. So to Christie's point, we need to make sure this is a very strict statistical method that is valid. And and even reaching out to seniors, reaching out to youth, again, we need to keep that statistically valuable for even those smaller groups, or we're gonna get skewed results.
Thank you. Christie, I still see your hand raised. Did you have something else you wanted to?
No, I mean, I think it's stuck up there. Sorry. But I think if you do a statistically valid survey, we don't have to, you, you'll capture the senior population and the youth population. That's kind of the nature of statistically valid survey. So but yeah, sorry, I'll try and get my hand down here. Oh, you took it down. Thank you.
I did. No worries. Great. I appreciate that. Okay. Anything else on C one, community visioning that we haven't captured yet? Anything on C two before we leave this page?
Yeah, I have a question on. Yep, I'm on. C two, if we didn't do that IT web design, does that free up resources? Or is this just part of the normal work plan? And if we don't do that, they, we're vacating what we're planning to do. In other words, it's a bandwidth issue on all of these. And I'm just wondering if if the IT department, this seems like a core requirement for them. Does the does this free them up? Does this free up IT to do other stuff? In other words?
So yes, it would free up a single resource in IT to do other work. However, the the website redesign is, dare I say, long overdue. It's been necessary, and it's been on our work plan for as long as I've been here, which is eighteen-plus months. And with the combination of the cyber event and the pandemic, we just haven't been able to get to this. So the other thing I wanted to articulate about it is simply that while it's being led by IT, this is in concert with the communications and Celia's team. So they really are taking the bull by the horns and and working through this. And we're obviously partnering with them extensively.
Thanks. And I see two hands. It looks like David's hand went up first and then Pam.
Yeah. So so for community development, the the overhaul of the website really is essential in providing public information. And the, in an example is, the current website that we have is a great host to post things, but there's no way for customers to filter and sort what they're looking for, or I guess it's a reduced functionality. And what we're trying to do is to to be able to tailor the information that an individual is seeking so they're not being confronted with so many results that they don't know where to go. And in order for us to cut back on the amount of calls to staff and the need for that individual customer service, which will always be there. We're hoping that in in upgraded, much improved website functionality will allow for users to find and self-help that information. And then we could also start to put more information on the website without the fear of burying someone in in overload.
I'd like to make some comments too about the, Wendy, can I go?
Ten seconds. I had a quick request from somebody about how do you find the raise hand? I just want to make sure everyone knows how to do that. If you go into your toolbar, use your mouse and and go down to the very bottom, you'll see in the far right, the word reactions, right? And if you click on reactions, there's a little space bar that says raise hand. You click on that, that'll give you the raise hand, and you click on it again, and it'll take it down. So I wanted to make sure people had that. I also heard, I mean, Pam was gonna be next, but I don't know who was speaking because I don't have all of you on my on the piece. So and thanks, Chris, you got the thumbs up. So now everybody knows how to get there. Pam, you're next. And then I see Celia after that.
Yeah, I'll just throw in kind of pile on. Our website overhaul is so long overdue. As a council, I think we have to support this. It is so hard to find information out there. It's just, it's kind of terrible. And it's almost embarrassing when you look at our website compared to other cities, especially given where we are in such a tech savvy environment. So I, I think this has to be a really top priority. And I appreciate the communications team and the IT team is working on this. This is so important.
Go ahead, Celia.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. The webs, when we are talking about the redesign, the website redesign is going to influence and affect all of our communication platforms and and which includes e-news and includes our print newsletter. There are just so many other ways that we communicate, and we really want to take a holistic view of how we are reaching out to our our residents and connect Sammamish is a huge part of it. So really, the function behind this is to make it easier for you all to, 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 to help us help the city share a consistent message. So we're building in functionality, functionality where it makes it really easy for you to share so that we share information from our website so that we're all speaking with one voice on critical information. And also even simple things like downloading an event, a city meeting to one's calendar. We, you know, those are things that the website will be updated with. So just to make it highly functional, highly shareable and highly consistent across all of our communication platforms so that we're all speaking with one voice. That's the goal.
Thanks, Celia.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this page? Are we ready to go to the next one? Nice job, Chris. He's really into those. I love it. See, that makes my job easier, too. If you, if you show me visually, I'd love it. Okay. Go ahead. I have, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more.
Sorry, Chris. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted, following all the conversation and and the feedback I got, I fully support C two.
And I just want to add one quick follow-up. I did confirm with our project manager on the community visioning that that sixty-five thousand dollars allocated to this work and our budget will cover a statistically valid survey.
Thanks, Kelly. Look at this responsiveness right away. I love it. Okay, let's move on to the next one then. Beautiful.
All righty, looking at community livability focus area next. We have a few more items on this list. The phase two regulations update that DCD is doing. The small business nonprofit COVID nineteen grants that we still need to finish allocating. Wireless communications code updates, ADA transition plan finalization. A couple of arch items there on L five and L six. And then the comp plan annual docket. So looking for any questions on these items here.
Pam, it looks like I saw your hand. There you go.
I guess one quick question, one quick question, because I know things are kind of evolving, but just in general, and this probably doesn't apply just here, it probably applies more broadly is is there anything that we're doing or anything that we need to plan on doing to kind of understand how the the effects of the pandemic and sort of the post-pandemic world will affect everything, right? So some of these things are very specific, right? Like the the grants and stuff are are very tactical, like we need to get those out now because they're affecting people during the pandemic. But as we look at some of these longer-term items, how are we kind of factoring that in or planning to to be able to factor that in? Because I think, I think we're all aware that the post-pandemic world will be different. And and the post-pandemic world is probably not going to be an event in time, right? We're, we're going to, we're gonna slowly transition back to a new normal. And so I'm just curious, is that something we we are thinking about? And if so, how how will we account for all of that?
I can speak to the the human services side at our last Human Services Commission meeting that we had on Wednesday, actually, two days ago. We were, we were talking about the work plan for this year and something that they would like to do and something they like to consider, at least from the human services perspective, is is just that, Councilmember Stewart, the kind of, what are the knock-on effects of the the pandemic? And, you know, how can the commission, you know, study that or potentially be of assistance as it relates to human services? I'm not sure if anybody else had any feedback. As you noted, we didn't have any specific council work plan item included on here, but certainly something we could look to add.
I just think about like, when I think about large and housing trust funds and things like that. I feel like the post, that as we transition, you know, I, I think a lot of that is all related and what what those needs might be. And, you know, are there, are there groups? Obviously, we're not the only city who's dealing with this. Everybody's trying to figure that out. So are there certain people? Is there a task force from the county or the state level that we should be plugging into to understand how these things might change as we move forward? I'm gonna take that as a no.
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll respond is, is that we will stay alert. This staff is pretty alert as in keeping a pulse on what's going on in the county and the state. So we'll take alert to that. And I'm, I'm sure things will change. We know they will change because they're changing now, and there will be a new normal. But I think everyone is still in a reactive mode and not yet proactive with the visioning you're talking about. But we'll keep, stay alert.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate that.
If I could just add something I wanted to say just in general with this work plan is these are the projects that we know of right now. There are always things that come up during the year that we end up adding to our work plan. It happened last year. You know, what we projected at our twenty twenty retreat isn't exactly how we ended the year. So it's certainly a working document, and we can add to it as as we know more.
Thank you. David, I see your hand raised.
Yeah. So one, I think that that I've heard support from all the council on, and I don't, I don't know how this fits into the work plan going forward is we're definitely gonna, we've seen and people are realizing the the true need for stable broadband services in the city. And I think as a post-pandemic, post-COVID world that somehow finding our place and how we provide and how and how broadband services are provided, not necessarily the city providing them, but how they are provided to citizens in the community in order to ensure that we have a a robust capacity to school or work from home is very important.
Lisa, I see your hand raised.
Just wanting to agree with David Pyle and offer that some cities do have broadband utilities. The one that most recently springs to mind is Mount Vernon. And if anyone's interested, Mount Vernon has on its website, a link to the broadband utility that sort of summarizes where they have been, how they got there, and what the benefits are, if anybody's interested. That's all.
Thanks, you guys. That's a perfect example. And I'm sure there are other things that we just haven't even identified yet. And I, I think it's great if we keep all of that very much front and center on our radar. I just look at, you know, kind of housing, what the housing needs will be. And as we get more into it. And as we get more into it, you know, other types of maybe even, you know, childcare, which isn't something the city provides, but just are there things we need to look at in terms of making sure that people have a new kind of childcare potentially? Who knows? And working with our schools. I don't know that that fits specifically into here, but when I think about community livability, you know, how do we work with the school districts? We used to, when I first got on the council, we used to have regular meetings with the entire school boards. And maybe we're a little more in touch. Is that something we need to look at doing again? Because their needs are probably going to be changing rapidly. And how can we partner with them to meet the needs of the community?
Excellent. Any, so those were kind of the pieces in general, which we've captured, which is great. Last chance to kind of, is there anything L1 through L7 that you have right now? It's just sort of the questions about any, any particular questions on any of these particular work plan items?
So my, my thoughts are on the post pandemic conceptually. I agree with what's been said. However, I think it's a, an integral part of just about every work plan item we're doing. So I think the staff is already putting a radar on that impact as it affects any of these work plan items. So I don't think it needs to be a separate item right now, in my opinion. I think it's just needs to be a subpart of every single element that we, as applicable.
Thanks, Chris.
Are we ready to move on?
I think so. I was just kind of gauging. I don't see any, any other hands. Yeah, let's move on to the next topic.
Great. And that brings us to community safety, the community safety focus area. Under studies planned and plans and other operating items, we have two projects. Title 23 updates, which is our code compliance regulations primarily. And the second is development of emergency management related plans. So mass care evacuation and debris management. Under capital, under the capital projects section, we have the fire station 82 renovation and kind of an ongoing ADA, new program, but ongoing ADA barrier removal in our right of way. Any questions on the community safety focus area?
Celia, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that item S2 is actually part of the communication plan as well for the website redesign in, in that it is going to exist as a sub site on our website. An emergent, you know, very focused emergency management site so that we can rapidly communicate to our residents. So, so it's linked together.
Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other hands from council. You good about moving on to the next one? These are clear enough. Okay, I'm seeing nods.
Okay, moving on to culture and recreation. Under studies, plans and other operating items, we have the permanent art piece that council requested last year for the arts commission to work on. The city code changes to title 7A, which deals with our parks recreation code. Kohani Park master plan as well as Beaton Hill and Big Rock Park South master plan. There's a number of items under capital here. We don't have to go through all them, but you can read them on the plan. So any questions on this section here, culture and recreation?
Yes, Christie.
Thanks. I, I think I need a refresher on what we're doing on this Kohani Park master plan because the last time this was bubbled up to council, council opted not to move forward with the master plan. So I, you know, maybe Anjali can speak to what it is we're doing here. I mean, we heard some pretty strong opposition from the Kohani community there. So I don't know if this is, we're tackling it from a different perspective this time or what we're doing here.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. So the Kohani master plan is really, you know, it's tackling a master plan for our parks is what we do for all of our parks. Either ones we have purchased property for or ones we have got from King County. So that, you know, they're all, the ones from King County are all about 30 years old or older. So a lot of the amenities at the end of their life. And we don't want to go in there and just put in a lot of money and replace an amenity in the same place if in fact we are going to need to move things around. So with that in mind, we started the process and actually got, I would say, two thirds of the way. And you're right that, you know, we always do plans that are moderate, conservative, and then something maybe more ambitious. And where the community and the commission landed was something quite conservative. So we aren't really changing a whole lot. So the preferred master plan that we took to the community and the commission is actually something that Lahani community was very happy with. And there, there are some big dollar amounts attached to that, but that is if we tackle, you know, a complete rebuild at one time. So when we brought it to council, I think, you know, the community was satisfied with it. The commission had bought off on it, but there was a sense like if we aren't really gaining too many more amenities, then why would we do the, you know, why would we adopt the plan? But, you know, again, a lot of those amenities are at the end of their life. If we are to rebuild those two soccer fields in place and, you know, and make the cricket field right sized, then there is a lot of money going to go into it. So I think that's really where we left off. So the answer is we are not, we think we are almost there. Our first step would be though, to bring it back to council and update you in a meeting to, you know, to refresh your memory and see, you know, where we're at and then take feedback. If you like where we're at, we're close to going into, we do a SEPA. We go through a permit process and come back in about three to four months to you to adopt the plan. But if you feel that there's more work to be done, then staff will work with the consultant and, you know, have to obviously come up with another scope and budget and fee and take it from there. But having gone two thirds of the way, we didn't want to leave it that way because say, for instance, the play equipment becomes at some point unsafe to use and we have to replace it. The master plan options didn't show them in that same location. So we don't want to be in a place where, you know, we are going in with a fragmented approach and working on one amenity at a time without thinking about the whole picture and having council buy off on what that park should be long term.
Question on that follow up. Do we get revenue for cricket play at Kohani right now?
We do.
Okay, okay. And, and is the community interested in expanding cricket? Because I know there's a lot of community angst over the late night noise of the cricket. Lot of screaming, hollering on an almost daily basis during the prime times.
So, you know, there are competing uses at that park. And cricket brings the biggest revenue there. I don't know about the late night play. Their games are long. So, you know, when they take up, their games go hours together. And so there is a limited use for soccer because the overlay of the cricket field is over two soccer fields. And so what was done for that is to relieve some of the use. We've actually built a second pitch for practice for cricket to the side. So during the week when there's practices going on, they don't have to take up the two soccer fields and the two soccer fields could be rented for other uses. Now, you know, there, there has been some resistance in the early part of the master plan process from the Kohani community because for years together, you know, it wasn't a city park and King County wasn't programming it to the extent the city was. And so, you know, they had a more community use of the park. But that was not a time when all taxpayers paid for the use of that park. It wasn't a part of the Samamish park system, so to say. And it is our understanding that at the time Kohani was our next, the residents were given the opportunity to take ownership of that park and maintain it themselves. And thereby, you know, they do have other smaller parks with some great amenities and those remain and are paid for through their HOA, through the residents of the Kohani neighborhood. But with this one becoming a city park, I think the, they, they slowly came to, you know, an understanding that there are other uses that will be accommodated here. And that's what we heard from them. There are other things the city has done, you know, differently, which is we have moved kids known series and a Shakespeare in the Park to Kohani to may bring it closer to them and make them feel like they are part of the bigger park system. So there's definitely some give and take.
Thanks, Anjali. I'm, I'm going to look back to Christie because I think you had a couple of follow ups and then we'll go to Ken after Christie. So go ahead, Christie.
Sorry, I couldn't get to my, my mute button. No, I was trying to ask a question and then Chris went on. I, I, I think I just wasn't quite clear as to whether this is still the same subject matter that council saw previously, or if you've gone back out to the Kohani community. No, it's the same thing. Is that what I'm?
That's right. Because like I said, the community gave us in writing that they are very happy with the preferred master plan and the point that, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Christine. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't even remember if I was on council when this plan was brought up and discussed or if I was sitting in the audience. But I remember it landed with a rather kind of resounding thud. And I, I would just recommend before any more work is done on this or before any more dollars are spent or plans are pushed forward, that from my memory, there was, there was no consensus on what the plan would be and how it would, how and when it would be moved forward. So I, I would imagine we'd want to at least revisit this and do a reality check on where we are with this.
Yes, absolutely. That would be the first step would be to just bring it back where we left off and do a refresher and then decide the course of action.
Good questions. All right, other areas, anything else on the, the culture and recreation theme area?
If you scroll up on, so you can see more of the capital projects. Thank you.
Great. And while Chris is looking at that, I saw Pam's hand raised. So go ahead, Pam.
Sorry, I do like the physical hand raised versus the virtual. The, the one thing on here, and this isn't something that we have discussed in any detail, but it kind of came up and, and that is the whole concept of, you know, more dog parks. And I don't know if that's something we want to figure out how we might incorporate that. Again, I know that there's interest from the council for that, but we are all dog people. So that may not be a statistically valid sample of the community, but certainly something we might want to think about. I know, I know the pandemic kind of highlighted some of the challenges there because I think we were hesitant to open that since there was just the one and we were worried about overcrowding. But it certainly is a challenge if you want a place for your dog to be able to go and run and work out some of that energy, especially when we're all trapped in the house together. It would be nice thing.
Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, on that same topic, I think while we're all dog people, I referenced earlier that we used to have a parking lot. And the parking lot was kind of, these are things council wants to tackle, but we don't have a place on our timeline to put them right now. And, and a dog park was one of them. So at some point in time, our parking lot like just disappeared. And with it, all those things that councils from, you know, before, maybe some of you were on the council have just kind of, you know, gone to the wayside. But that was one of them. So it was obviously a community concern. And just for the edification of the public, because it's obviously not thing public facing the email exchange. But I did ask for the city to have a temporary dog park. Issaquah has done one, Bothell has done one. I think they're pretty popular and that's, that's why I brought it up. Yes, my dog's barking in the background right now. I am, but I, you know, we only have one dog park in Samamish and people are utilizing current parks that are not dog parks as off leash dog parks. And so that was kind of my, my idea in why we might want to consider.
Right. And, and I think it's worth bringing up because I know staff looked into it and there are some, you know, safety and expense challenges and work planning challenges. So I think it's something we all want. And the question, I think, as we have to do for staff is help them, you know, where does that fit in the priorities? Because they can only do so much with the, the resources they have. So I just wanted to bring that up and Christie, I like the idea of having a parking lot. I guess the question is, do we want to try to have some sort of head nodding here to say, is that something we want staff to go back and look at that against these priorities? And come back and tell us if we added a dog park, what would have to come off the list? Is that something we want them to go evaluate or to find out if they could add that to the list? I don't know that they have the capacity to do that. So is that something we want them to actually look at now?
I think that's up to council. I mean, there's a lot on here from the parks standpoint, in my opinion. And, you know, some of them, I'm like, yeah. I mean, I, I might put the dog park higher than some of the other ones that are on here, frankly. But I'm one of seven council members, so.
Well, I'd also point out that we are, you know, pretty darn close to Marymore, which has got an amazing dog park with doggy place to wash your dog. So.
But it's not completely fenced in. So as a dog owner, that's not a place that at least I'm willing to take my dog. It's, it's too big and it's not completely fenced. So that's a risk for our dog owners.
Or those of us who do like to use it, it is very close by.
Yeah, it's there.
Would you like me to speak to this very briefly now? And then I do like the parking lot idea a lot, you know, it makes a lot of sense. We do want to be responsive to our community needs. And I will say that Pro Plan identified the need for a second dog park. So, you know, that is not new information. The challenge we had is an unidentified location. And so it's not showing up in this biennial budget, but it is in, you know, we shared with council in August of last year, a six year plan and a second, the location and design of a second dog park is out there. I think it's 23 or 24. So that is the case now. If we are to reprioritize, I would say that, you know, it, it's going, it is difficult to take on a project like that because if it's something that has to happen quick, it's, it's a combination of something that involves our planning team and our maintenance team. And our maintenance team, as you know, we just came out of, you know, adopting a budget where we are going to hold them to a smaller number and delay hiring. So we don't have a lot of workforce over there. For the park planning side, we also held off on some vacancies, just not knowing how this pandemic would play out. So we really have one project manager right now that's tackling most of these projects. So if, you know, there are some projects here that can't move, which is like the Eastlake Community Field turf replacement. It's, it's something that needs to be managed. It's the safety of that field. They, they do a G max testing on the resiliency of how the turfs held up. And if it's unsafe, we just absolutely have to replace it or the school will have to shut down the fields. The Inglewood Middle School fields are our biggest project and we, you know, do have a timeline. If we push things out a bit, we lose a whole year because you can only construct fields at schools during the summer. And generally, you know, the summer is going to be the, even if it were in a private, even if it were on a city park, we would recommend, you know, the spring and summer timeframe for construction. So there would be a fairly big impact very quickly on dog parks. So again, there is a need identified by the community. You are obviously hearing about it. That said, people will, you know, make a dog park where they want to. I'll give you an example of our existing dog park at Beaver Lake. We, you know, we have a dog park there, but every time you go to the lodge site, you will see people use that open lawn adjacent to the lodge as a dog park. So, you know, people, there's some people who just, you know, don't like to use a dog park. And the sense is like, you know, even if you build something across from Big Rock Park, the ones who want to run their dogs in the open lawn, they tend to do it. So, you know, that's just something to keep in mind. We as staff have not heard from anyone about a dog park. And I can, you know, double check with some of our. And I can, you know, double check with some of our other staff that do hear from the community. So, you know, those are just some thoughts. And then we did, you know, do our homework and check with Bothell and Issaquah. And they both did it because they didn't have the funds to build a more permanent park. And there was this, you know, ongoing discussions and planning, and they just weren't able to get to a place of something more permanent. So they settled for the next best, which is temporary. And they are having a lot of maintenance issues. Some of them do it only in the spring and summer, shut it down for the winter and then come back and, you know, reopen it in the spring and the summer. So just some things to keep in mind. I think, you know, we are in a good place with one good park. We haven't heard it's at capacity. We haven't had anyone come back and say it's been too busy and I've had to, you know, go back home. But again, you know, happy to bring it to a discussion and see if we need to reprioritize it, maybe if not this year, maybe next year. More than happy to bring that in front of council.
Thanks, Anjali. Go ahead, Kristi. I see your hand.
So leave it to Planning Commissioner Josh Amato to be Johnny on the spot with information because he just emailed several of the council members. He screenshot right out of the Pro Plan, which puts off-leash dog parks as number four. Number one, walking and hiking trails. Number two, restrooms in parks. Number three, new lands for access to Lake Samamish. And number four is those off-leash dog parks. So it actually scores higher on needs for our community than indoor soccer fields, a senior center, fields for soccer, lacrosse, football, sports courts, all of that. So I think keeping that in mind, because the Pro Plan was statistically valid, that it's high on the priority list for our community.
Thanks, Kristi. Great discussion. Anything else on any of these parks and recreation pieces, anything in the Rs? Go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
Anjali, on the Beaver Lake Athletic Fields, is this scope include the potential? Let me back up a bit. A lot of residents are arguing that we have a field shortage. And Beaver Lake Park might be a sweet spot to help solve a lot of that shortage, especially if we do astroturf and synthetic turf and lights in that area. So I want to make sure, is this scope looking at the big expensive, if you want to put it that way, option? Because I'm afraid if we don't capitalize on Beaver Lake Park, there's not very many places outside of Beaver Lake Park that are compatible with existing neighborhoods that would be a potential sighting. And we'll lose this opportunity if we don't do it right. I'd hate to do something short and cheap and then have to tear it up later and build it up with more expensive options to get it to a full-blown field utilization. So I want to make sure that we're considering the big picture, the long, the full utilization of Beaver Lake Park to help solve our field shortages.
Yeah, great question. And so, you know, they're basically proposing that we do a feasibility to bring to council both options. The option of the adopted master plan, which basically allowed for synthetic turf and lights only for one multi-use field and making the infields of little league fields as artificial turf. So the adopted master plan did not allow for artificial turf and lights across all the fields. But we, you know, will be using the feasibility study to kind of do a reality check on what it would cost in today's dollars. It's going to be something in the order of about 14 million. And what you would gain from that is reorienting three little league fields and adding one multi-use soccer field. And we would have the ability to make that one soccer field or lacrosse field artificial turf with lights. So we would bring you information on that. And then more recently, the athletic field study felt that it wasn't the best, you know, use of resources because it was how would we increase the playability on our existing fields or add fields, keeping resources in mind? And so they had recommended that there's actually a field shortage more in the north end of the city. And at Inglewood, you'd end up with close to four fields, like two multi-use fields, but then with the overlay with, you know, the other ball fields, we'd end up with up to four fields. And at Beaver Lake, the recommendation was, you know, to only improve the infields on the existing ball fields, baseball fields. So, but to help council make a decision as to where you would like to go with it, we would be doing a feasibility study on both options. And that would allow you to decide. There would be more funding that we would need to allocate to the Beaver Lake Park Athletic Fields in future budget cycles if we decided to build the adopted master plan. But we could absolutely build that if that is what council would like to do.
Or at least have an incremental approach. If you see a long-term vision, you don't want to do it all at once. Make sure we're not creating a scenario that creates rework and the expense of rework.
Thanks. We have just a couple of minutes before noon, just checking in again. Anything else that's striking you on any of these recreation projects?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to thank the Parks Department. I think that with a lot of the issues that we as council tend to get caught up in, I think we lose sight of the fact that the parks and the trails and the recreation are some of the things that our community uses the most and really needs the most. And especially during this pandemic, having the ability to get out into the outdoors was really critical for people. So I just want to give a shout out to the whole entire Parks Department for all the great work that they've done in the maintenance and keeping things going, dealing with, you know, where there were needed closures and having to deal with that. There was a lot going on and I just want to thank them for all of that.
Thank you.
You can all use the little reaction and do the little, you know, celebratory icon if you want. Nice job, or like this, good work. There you go. I like that, Pam. Well, this, here's the nice gift. It appears that we're at a nice break and this is right at the lunch hour. So, you know, in case anything else strikes you after lunch, you know, we can see if there is, but then we can move on. Oh, Kristi, you've got something.
Yeah, just, I just really quick before we break, and this is unrelated to our work plan, but there's a few emails that are flying back and forth. And I just wanted to be sure that everyone was aware. Sorry, it's so hard not to get emotional about it. This Snoqualmie Indian Tribe Chief passed away. And I know some of you have probably met him. I had an opportunity to meet him and it's just such a loss. He's done a lot of work and championed a lot of stuff here in Samamish. And so I just wanted to share that and, you know, have everybody have an opportunity to just, if you want to say something, but a huge loss, huge loss.
Thank you, Kristi.
Sorry, I'm Irish. My bladder is right here. I always cry, I'm terrible.
Well, to use one of your core values you guys talked about yesterday is you're being real. Thanks for bringing your real self to the moment. Maybe it's a good time to take that break. You know, it's nice to nourish your body and you can maybe be reflective and appreciate some of the souls that have been with us and have made an impact on your community, such a nice way to think about that. Thank you for your work this morning. And I look forward to continuing the conversation after lunch, picking up where we've left off. So we'll break, I'll stop recording and we'll pick it up right at one o'clock. All right.
Sounds great. In council, if I'm running a few minutes late, I've got a Law and Justice Contract Cities meeting here right at noon, I've got to jump on to. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, welcome back. So hopefully you are feeling rejuvenated and ready, whatever you have to do to kind of keep your energy up. I know that full days are always something, it kind of zaps our energy and certainly in screen time. So I appreciate all of the great work that you've been doing today. Thank you for staying so engaged and responsive. I know that we have a choice at this moment. Chris just put in a question to see if there's a piece on communication. And I think if we were to kind of loop back, this might be a good time to pick that up and then continue with the work plan. Or, Chris, we bring in the communication question that you want at the end of the work plan conversation. So it's a choice point for the council about when we do that.
I think we can do it after the work plan, work plan.
Okay. And I'm seeing some thumbs up, that's lovely. And Pam, I'm seeing your hand raised.
Yeah, well, I completely agree. We need to have some rules on that. I do feel pretty strongly that discussing rules around public comment should be done in a regular public meeting where more of the public, like where there's, you know, pre-announcement to the public that we're going to be discussing this so that they can actually weigh in. Just because, and I think we need to have some clear rules. I don't disagree with any of that. But I feel like regulating people's public comment and not giving them the opportunity to comment on that is probably not good democracy, just in general.
Number one, you use the word regulate, it's not intend to regulate, it's to facilitate efficient communication. But I do agree with you that perhaps we can kick that to a future meeting and have a clear focus and agenda on how to optimize and enhance our public comment process for, so everybody's public benefit.
Yeah, I actually don't think we're going to have a lot of disagreement on that, Chris. I just think it should be done more transparently for the public so nobody thinks anything nefarious is happening.
I'm okay.
Because I don't think there is.
And enhance, good words.
Looked at the dictionary during lunch.
All right, so the agreement is you're going to move that piece to a future meeting. So I saw enough nods with that. So thanks for bringing that up, Chris. It's been recorded. All right, well, let's go ahead and Mike, you can take over the screen again. And actually, as you're preparing for that, I just want to do a quick, what I call pulse check. Is the process so far working for at least the council, getting your questions answered? Is the pace working well for you? Any adjustments in our process as we're going through this at the moment? Anything you'd offer? Good. I always like to kind of check in so we can make adjustments. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, thank you, Wendy. So where we ended before lunch was, I feel like we had all of our questions answered on culture and recreation. So let's move on to our next tab here, which is the focus area on environmental health and protection. So in this area, some examples, we have the Urban Forest Management Plan 2021 Work Program, the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin Plan, Urban Forest Management Plan Implementation and Strategic Plan, Phase Water, Stormwater Amendments, Stormwater Retrofits Strategy, Source Control Inspection Program Development, Pile Lake Creek Basin Plan. And then here at the bottom, we have a couple of the optional projects that I mentioned yesterday. So these are projects that the city manager and staff are recommending, but do not currently have a budget. So looking for direction there. And that direction could come now, or we could wait till the next discussion prompt, which is, do we want to add anything to our work program? So two items are at the bottom. And then we also have some capital projects relating to the Environmental Health and Protection Focus Area, two culverts, George Davis and Ebright Land Acquisition, Ditch and Drainage Project, 228 Catch Basin and 248 Avenue Culvert. So I will open it up for any council discussion.
Kristi.
Thanks. On the hydrology study of high-risk areas, maybe staff can talk a little bit more about, I guess, you know, what those protections potentially might look like and how implementable they'll be considering, you know, development that's already occurred. I guess I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what the study might accomplish and what it might yield.
Jeff, would you like to speak to the issue before I do?
Sure, Dave, I'll take a stab at that. I also have Danica Global Car here that might, you might tag team depending upon where the questions go. But they, just circling back, we went before City Council in November under twos and threes with an educational piece on stormwater. We actually recorded those and have video presentations that are on the website as a background. We also created a white paper on the complexities and the issues associated with stormwater and how we got here from 2000, well, historically, but where we are today with the regulatory environment that we find ourselves in. This particular hydraulic study would allow staff to go into specific sensitive basins and look at the specific characteristics that are happening there and define what the, what the additional protections might be warranted. For instance, we have wetlands that are downstream, or excuse me, in the upstream area of Evite Creek that are very sensitive to hydrologic conditions. And they may need additional protection in addition to stream flows downstream and so forth. So this would afford us the opportunity to do the technical analysis, gather data in key stormwater drainage basins and potentially come back with different kinds of solutions, treatments, mitigations, and further capital projects that warrant further environmental protection. That would be the primary here.
I think, you know, that certainly has a lot of value. And I guess part of the reason I was looking for what those protections might be is, and I'm not exactly sure where it is in here, but I think we haven't gotten to it quite yet. I'm scrolling to find out where it might be. Oh, so it's under Stormwater Capital Projects, so we'll get to that later. But I wondered if the two were tethered maybe in some way because it talks about regional stormwater facilities. And I have questions about that, but I'm curious, you know, you know, might this yield that, you know, a regional stormwater system would be needed? Is that potentially one of the protections that could be yielded from this?
It could be regional or subregional, depending upon the findings. And again, it's kind of, what are we trying to protect or enhance? You know, the King County regulations that we've adopted, you know, do a decent job for the most part, but it doesn't cover everything that it could or maybe should, given the unique characteristics of Samamish, the plateau and the hydrologic conditions that exist. Have we done enough? It's different in the sense that the retrofit project, we'll talk a little bit later and I'll let Danica explain that one when we get there. But this is taking a specific deep dive into a couple of the sub-basins and seeing if there is an opportunity or a need for additional, you know, additional analysis and potentially additional projects that haven't been done to the state.
I hear a lot of, I hear a lot of dialogue and a lot of concerns, both voiced by the public, voiced by the council and staff. And we need, we need the area studied, we need the data. We shouldn't just move in a way that we could be accused to be an arbitrary and capricious. And that's not anyone's intent, but having the information from qualified experts so we really better understand the geotechnical issues of that geography and the hydrological impacts of more water, less water. It's valuable information that we do not yet have.
Sure, so if I can finish my, I guess my thoughts, now that I have kind of a better understanding, I think this one would be of high value. And I mean, I see here in the notes that there's no budget approved, it's not on the work plan. You know, my first question is, is, you know, generally speaking, what are the costs associated with this? And two, do we have time to put this in or does something else have to fall off? I think this one really is probably pretty critical because, you know, at some point it becomes too late. because, you know, at some point, it becomes too late to implement potential protections. And when we're talking about, you know, certain sub-areas, we're talking about the potential to impact our Kocany Salmon Bearing Streams and some of our other projects that we've already accomplished, like Zocuse, those that we have on our work plan for this year, which include George Davis and Ebright. If we go forward and do these projects and we put a lot of our taxpayer dollars into these projects for protection of Kocany, yet we don't go back and do the very basic at the very front of the line, right? We're at the end of the line when we're talking about culvert projects, right? That's where it enters the lake. But if we are going to, you know, send additional sediment downstream, then we are undoing potentially work that we're doing on these. So from my personal standpoint, I think, you know, it says optional. I don't think it's optional. I think it's critical that we do this. And it, you know, depending on what staff says, I think front-loading it in the work plan will be critical, too.
Well, it's here because I do think it's critical information. I don't think anything has to fall off at this point, but we don't know. And direction from the council to go out and solicit proposals that include the consultant support to gather the information together, put it together and process it in a form and format that we can respond to is what would be part of the cost.
Okay. Do we have any idea on what it might cost us? I mean, if we say go.
Well, let's go, let's go find out. I don't know if it's $100,000. I don't know if it's 250, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
One thing, Chris, I'll try related to, does something have to come off the work plan? Just recognize at the moment, we're shorthanded in Public Works. I have a couple of people who were in acting positions, one of which is Danica. Thank you very much. And we may need to shuffle some projects to account for this, or we may need to bring on some staffing, temporary staffing consultant, project management support as well. So these would be all things that we would bring back to you in that package very soon to council.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with Kristi that I don't think this is a maybe project. And as Jeff said, we are unique here up on the plateau. We're unique with a lot of situations, soil being one of them, and or lack thereof, and rock being the other choice. But anyway, I believe E8, and I believe E8 and E9 are probably linked. We'll talk about both of them, I'm sure. But I look at something like this in the lens of, is it, are things that we do recoverable? And are they not recoverable? And what happens is, once you do the development and start sending that additional stormwater wherever it's going, because it's not going into the ground where the development used to be, that becomes an unrecoverable situation. You can't change it. If you fill up the streams with silt, or if you fill up the downhill neighbors' basements with water, or you fill up their streets with water when it rains heavily, you've now created a situation that we can't change. We can't go back and just say, well, let's just take those houses down or let's remove that particular development because it's having these unforeseen effects. And right now, they're unforeseen because we don't have the data, enough data to look and say, can we see what's going to happen? So I would say, as, as, as Kristi did, I don't think it's a choice in these. We are talking about covering up a lot of area that right now absorbs water. We need to know what's going to happen with that stormwater. We need to know where it's going to go. We need an in-depth study by a professional. As per use of staff, I would, you know, look to push as much as this out as I could, obviously, to third parties. Let's, you know, use the professionals that are out there. Understand, we do need some staff coordination on this. But I would consider E8 to be a have-to rather than a think-about-it. And I'll speak to E9 when we get to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Pam's hand is raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of always having the data and making sure we're making data-driven decisions. My question is really around, I think we kind of touched on this earlier. What data do we already have? It was a few years ago that we were kind of having conversations about, you know, looking at the regional stormwater options in the town center area. So I feel like there might be data out there. Can someone speak to what data we already have around some of this? So that we make sure that the data we're going to collect is the incremental data?
Yeah, go ahead, Danica.
I was going to say, do you want me to take that? I think I have the longest longevity of our team here. That's a great question, Councilmember Stewart. And because we do have data right now, right? So right now, what I'll point out actually here is E5, which is the Stormwater Retrofits Strategy. We've done some of the actions that are proposed in E8, you know, looking at drainage basins and looking at downstream water quality, potential risks to water quality. We've started doing a lot of that with our Stormwater Retrofits Strategy over a year ago now. So we're well on our way to having a lot of this data. It's just maybe not packaged in the precise way that might be best for council to view and see. So we do have a lot of this, other things such as flow rates. Those are already actually being collected in a lot of our creeks by King County, their Water Resources Group. So again, we, there's a lot of data out there. That's why I think this particular one, E8, as Jeff and Dave Rudet said, we think that a consultant could come on board and help us with this, just packaging that data and maybe collecting a little bit more to augment that. So there's, yes, there's a lot of data as far as regional town center. To my knowledge, and this predates me, the last time that stormwater in town center was given a really strong look was when the Town Center Regional Stormwater Plan was developed. I want to say that was in 2008. And that was the last time a really in-depth look was given to that plan.
Okay, that's interesting because we did have a study session on it. Kristi, I don't know if you or Chris or Karen can remember exactly when that was. But I remember, I distinctly remember it because the, I had to like operate the mic for some of the speakers because we didn't have enough mics to go around. So I was just curious what, you know, what that data, but it sounds like E8 would go, get whatever data we have, figure out what we need and move forward. And I think that's great. I think anytime we can collect data and make sure we're making data-driven decisions, that that's always a good thing.
Thanks. Kelly, you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to the Town Center Regional Stormwater. We did come to City Council in '17 and in '18 to talk about the feasibility of a regional stormwater plan for the Town Center sub-area. So we did do some initial study on that. And that's what you may recollect as what we did about three years ago, four years ago on Town Center.
Thanks, Kelly.
Any other questions on any of the, you know, any of the E's? Before we get to the capital projects, maybe we'll just kind of keep the energy in the upper area. Go ahead.
Wouldn't we speak to that E9?
You want to speak to E9? And then is that all right, Pam, or did you have something else? Okay, so go ahead, Dave.
Totally.
Great, we'll go, Dave.
No, yeah, I'm looking to staff to go ahead and expand on E9 since it was tied in there before we moved on.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll take a stab at this. And then I may, depending upon other council comments, Danica can weigh in as well. The, the rules associated with stormwater have evolved and changed over the last 20 or 10 years, for sure. And this particular one, since 2016, we have not regone back and reevaluated or looked at in detail, at least to my knowledge. Are the flow control requirements in there sufficient again for Samamish? Given that, again, the unique characteristics that we have in our community in several of our basins and sub-basins, are, do we have the right controls in place? You know, there was a volume standard that was done as an interim thing, you know, several years ago. And that got changed once we had good science and Department of Ecology updated the low-impact development requirements that replaced one, you know, for the other. But the purpose of that volume standard back then, as I've come to discover just in the past week, based on an opportunity to talk with past consultants that served the city, was to help protect the wetlands, not so much the streams per se, because your peaks and your durations tend to help with control the erosion piece. But the volume standard was meant to protect our high-quality sensitive wetlands. And when the, you know, the code changed and Department Ecology changed their requirements, we adapted to those or adopted those in 2016. Now it's been four or five years since then, and it's an opportunity to go back, reassess, and what is, what is it that we need for Samamish? Not just from a, you know, a typical county-wide drainage manual, but what more or anything do we need to do for environmental protection, sustainability, climate change? You know, right now, we only look at 100-year storms. Should we be looking at 150-year storms? Are those storms that are 100-year, are they really something else? And how do we adapt to those controls?
Thanks, Jeff. Any question? Yes, Kristi. And then Ken.
Thanks. I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself real quick. I just didn't want to lose the opportunity to try and define something because I think we're, what E9 says is flow control regulations. But Jeff, I also heard you talking about volume control. And my understanding is those are two different things. Is that correct?
Yes, and I could have Danica explain those if you'd like for a quick moment.
No, I just, I just want, because E9 is specific to flow control, but I heard you talking about volume. I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, on track here. Because what I'm seeing in here is, you know, the standards that in the text of E9, it says in 2013, the standard was relaxed. In 2016, the city repealed the 2010 interim standards. And that, I think the real rub is the volume, correct? Not flow.
Correct. Danica, you want to touch on that?
That's what the concern that I've heard from council and residents is. Is that, you know, flow control, the idea of flow control, which is a core requirement, regulates peaks and durations and handles erosion and streams. But volume does change, the volume of stormwater changes. And as Jeff said, the real impact that changing or increased volume of stormwater runoff has is extra water going to our creeks, or not creeks, our wetlands. And so, and that's, so this is, yes, it's the wetland piece, which is the concern here. So two different things.
Well, let me, let me get clarification. I'm not sure it's just a wetland thing, though, is it? Because, I mean, if you look at, let's just use Ebright for an example, the Lower Commons Park, that's got the headwaters of Ebright there. There's a large wetland that feeds Ebright Creek from there. So if you put a lot of volume in the wetland, in turn, you will also get additional volume in your creeks. And I think that's part of what I'm hearing. Some of the concern is, you know, how do you better mitigate the volume? Sorry, I just had two wild dogs run in here. The volume, boys. How do, how do we mitigate the volume that's going down and the damage that additional volume might have? And, you know, I think there are, you know, potentially some levers we have in using an example, like in the Town Center, for example, in the A-zone, we don't require any significant trees to be maintained on the parcel. And we know that our coniferous trees do an amazing job with stormwater retention and volume control without, you know, a human mechanism to replace them. So there, there might be levers, you know, with, with aiding ourselves, I guess, with volume control. I don't even know if that's a feasible lever to pull. But, I mean, if you maintained additional significant trees on a parcel, you are doing yourself, you know, a favor as far as volume control goes.
Yeah, and so for this topic, so we had planned to come to council this past Tuesday, so several days ago. And the meeting went long, and we got bumped, and that's, that's completely fine. So I think we've rescheduled for the first meeting in February. But that's where we wanted to have a lot of these really good discussions about, hey, what is feasible? What are these unique conditions of Samamish? And what the difference between volume matching and flow control? And how do we pull levers on, on either of those? So ideally, we would have been able to have that discussion and educational piece and have us as staff understand council's concerns and then have a discussion about E9. And Jeff, I don't know how you feel about this. My, my personal opinion is, you know, if, I don't think council has to make a decision. Dave and Jeff might disagree. But I don't, my personal opinion is council does not have to make a decision on E9 now. It's something that if in two weeks or a week and a half at the meeting, if council says, yes, we, we all agree now that everyone is, there's a consensus and a majority that wants to move forward with this and understand the details of this piece, then that's certainly something I can incorporate into the stormwater team's work plan in two weeks rather than pulling that lever right now. Jeff, is that your feeling on it, too?
Yeah, it would require City Council action. And so when we come back, you know, we're going to be presenting on February 2nd, the original agenda item. And at that time, we can continue this discussion. And if council wants to move forward, we would bring back, when the council's ready, you know, the consultant services that would, and the scope that goes along with this, if that's the direction the council would like us to go. We think it's very important to do. It's time to reevaluate and make sure that we are doing the right, that the levers that we currently pull are the right ones? Or do the levers need to be modified to provide additional environmental protection? We think.
Okay, yeah. Well, and I appreciate all that information. I think, you know, studying it, and I don't, I don't know if the verbiage here is exactly encompassing of what I have, you know, in my own personal head. But I do think that, you know, studying this to some degree is a good idea and understanding what the 2010, you know, regulations were versus what we have now. Because what you don't want to do is force LID, where LID cannot be achieved. Yet you also don't want to, you know, have, you know, this, you don't want to maintain all the stormwater on a singular site and not release it and starve your creeks of water source either, or your karas of our drinking water sources. So there's a real balance to be had here. You know, I point to, you know, the neighborhood Highcroft because they were under the 2010 regulations. And they were, you know, I think they were forced to do some LID where LID was not feasible. And now the residents downhill from there have water in their basements. They have flooded front yards, and they are not happy. And we do not want to have a repeat of that where, where water is popping out somewhere where it wasn't before and shouldn't be because it impacts downhill streams and property owners. So I do think, you know, E8 and E9 are critical. I just, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, it's investigating maybe all those levers that, that could be had to make sure that, that we're putting the right ones in place so that we don't have unintended consequences.
What, can I just say one quick thing? So for, we, as Dave and Jeff mentioned, for E8, there's, we believe there is staff capacity with consultant support to do that with our current work plan. But I would say E9 definitely, in my perspective, is a lot more all-encompassing. It's a much bigger lift. And I think in that case, some things would have to fall off the work plan for stormwater.
Great discussion. Thank you. I saw Ken's hand has been up, and then Karen.
Yeah, so I think I agree with Kristi and with most of what she says on E9. It's, it's a really interesting question. You know, on the description here on E9, you know, it states that the city adopted the interim LID stormwater standards for the Town Center area in 2010. And then it says in 2013, that standards was relaxed. And I think that's a very telling sentence, not just for Town Center, but, but any development within the city. If it's developed with certain standards, and then those standards are changed, then has the project been reevaluated? And in the question of the 2013 standards, from what I can see, there was not very good transparency at all when those standards were changed. They were changed in a manner which, when I researched it, indicates that the amount of vetting that went in to make sure the 2013 the amount of, of vetting that went in to make sure the 2010 worked and everybody was happy with it, 2013 was not vetted like that. And so it's the kind of thing that, that, that I think needs to be looked at very closely. We, um, we need to look at the word feasible, right? What, what is the truth of what feasible means and what does it mean to a project? And so I, I think that needs to be looked at pretty closely. It's really about continuity. Is there a continuity from what was approved to what ultimately ends up being built on the ground? And again, I'm not talking about town center, I'm talking about any development that's in the city. Certain things are proposed and voted on and approved. We need to make sure as, as council members that as these projects move forwards, there is continuity that the residents who approve these and who are happy with these plans, that that's what actually appears. And that comes with design, that comes with stormwater, that comes with a number of different things. But right now, we're looking at the stormwater side of it. So I, I think it's important that E nine, um, we work on that closely. We look at it and we spend the time and money to make sure that our, um, basically our promises that were made to residents in the past are upheld with a continuity for them in the future. Um, that the cities does what they said they were going to do. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Karen, you were next. And then Pam.
Yeah, just in the last year, I've, um, I could say two years, three years, but in the last year in particular, you know, and we've have, we're having these annual, you know, hundred and hundred and fifty year storms. You know, it's shown us that the, um, you know, we're just getting too much water that is not being absorbed and is just running. Um, and as it, you know, we have clay and clay doesn't absorb the water. So I do think we need to look at this. Uh, we need to see what the standards are, but how they were relaxed. What, you know, um, there are areas that LIDs just don't work for. And that's going to be in the areas where you have too much clay in the soil. So I think we need to look at that and find out, you know, what is reasonable in those areas, what is not going to be reasonable in those areas. Um, but I hate to lose another half a month by waiting, um, you know, two weeks. I think if we know we want to do something and we know we're going to want to study it, at least like to start getting a price and figuring out a timeframe on that now, than, um, waiting two weeks to do that. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Karen. Go ahead, Pam.
Yeah, um, thank you. Jeff, you said a couple of things that, you know, appealed to me very much. So you, you talked about, you know, making sure we have the best available science. And you talked about the effects of climate change and, and Mayor Moran, you, you kind of brought that up as well. Like, are we, are we really experiencing more frequent hundred or hundred and fifty year storms? So I would like to ask, um, and I know, again, Mike, if you want us to bring these things up now or at the end, when we talk about what might need to be added, I'm just curious. And Mayor, I think, uh, you, you and I, and, and, you know, guilty of not forwarding this mail and I will, uh, dig it up and forward it to the, to the rest of the council. But the League of Women Voters, and I want to say the People for Climate Action, have, um, been working with, uh, some of our, um, neighboring cities and King County to, um, put together, uh, at the, like, uh, uh, work with a consultant that would come around and help cities implement the, um, the dashboards to collect data for the K four CFs. So to start being able to collect data on what our greenhouse gas emissions are, so we have some baselines. And I think we should, I'd love to see us add a work item that says, what would it take from a staff coordination perspective to join this effort? Because I think that while it may cost us a little bit of time and money now, it would be far more cost effective to join into this bigger effort where you have a consultant that's going around and doing this for a bunch of cities at one time than for us to try to do it later and go it alone. And it would just be a way for us to start collecting data so that we have that data to know what is our baseline in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. And to start being able to feed that into some of these bigger efforts across the, the county, and really even more broadly across the region. So that we can start to see how that impacts, uh, some of these other, other environmental issues that we're trying to address. So that's something that I would like to see added, uh, for consideration. Um, and maybe have the, the staff and, and be able to make some of those connections between these organizations and the staff. If the staff is not already plugged into those, to see if we could, again, get some work done kind of on the cheap because it's, it's a coordinated effort as opposed to having to do it by ourselves. And I don't know, no Mayor Moran, if you have more information, if you've met with the folks at the League of Women Voters and talked to them anymore or not.
I did forward those emails out. I even forwarded out the, um, all the slides from that event that they had back in the beginning of December. So I'll, I'll send them back out.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it's just something that, again, I know it would, it would be a little bit of a cost now. But if we look at it from a long-term perspective, I think it's got a lot of upside benefit for us.
Yeah, I, I think what we can do on that point is, let us investigate that, what's going on and how we could include that as a separate task order and, and see, or a separate task, if you will. And, um, we, we will get back to you on it. I'm not familiar with it just yet, but, um, we can explore what that would take to become a part of that.
Great, Jeff. Thank you. And I, I think Mayor Moran and I can, can dig up some of those mails and, and get you guys connected into that.
Great. So good discussion so far. So it's like you're getting, um, some of the questions answered for what E eight and E nine as options are. And again, uh, appreciate that. Anything else on E one through E nine before we go scroll to the bottom on capital projects? Okay. Pam, I still see your hand raised. Is it, do you have a question or are you just? Okay, awesome. Just wanted to check in. Uh, okay. Let's move down to the bottom part there for your capital projects. There you go. Back to you, Mike.
Just looking for any council questions on these capital projects, if there are any.
Oh, Kristi.
Yeah, um, under land acquisition, um, I, I can't remember when it was. It may have been 2017 as it states here. But council set aside thirteen million dollars for, um, acquisition of property. And I'm just curious, like, what do we have left? Like, what are we, I mean, is it really actually enough to acquire parcels? Because they're certainly not inexpensive. So I was just kind of curious.
Yes, and I can answer that. So of that thirteen million, as of now, I believe we have spent roughly seven and a half million. So, but we have only a dollar, a, a million a year available for the remaining years. I think we'll have a carry forward from last year of about 1.6. So, but all in all, we've spent seven and a half out of the thirteen.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, any of these capital projects, E ten through E fifteen? Chris, do you have something on your mind?
No.
No? Okay. Great. Well, seeing none. Why don't we move on to the next one?
All right.
Keep our flow going.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to our next focus area, financial sustainability. We have, uh, let's see here, under studies plans and under operating items, a permit fee analysis, a quarterly financial update presentations, the carry forward process and the mid buy review, uh, a fee schedule coming towards the eight, end of the year and the annual property tax levy. On this focus area as well, we do have two additional optional projects. The purchasing procedures and policies update, as well as a multi-year financial forecast exercise. And I will now ask if council has any questions on this.
Go ahead, Pam. Yes.
I'll go. Um, it looks like you have sort of like the, the multi-year forecast. I'm not sure what that is. But I mean, at the last budget cycle, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, being able to balance our operations budget. So just looking at it from an operations perspective, is there a line item on here that says we're working on, you know, he has an options to bring to the council to figure out how we, how we neutralize our operations so that we are, we have revenue sources to fund our ongoing operations.
No, there really isn't anything on that exact topic. Why I brought up the multi-year financial forecast is that there's a consultant that has helped two other cities in King County. This was presented to the city managers back in September, October, the latter part of the year. Um, and they both used the same, uh, company to do the forecasting. And it was to, um, that's when the presentation was. The, the work was done earlier in the year because each city was approaching, um, how to, I think one was done to support a bond measure, another one was done to support tax increases. And what I got out of it is, uh, when the council, we went through the budget process, I wanted a, a, a solution or a forecast, um, I quickly thought of these folks. And it would hopefully give us the tools that we need looking forward on if taxes should be increased, if we need to curtail our expenditures, but to ferret a lot of that out. And I think having an outside third party firm who's familiar with, uh, Washington laws, the finance, King County, we should reach out and get a proposal for doing that. The other part of it is, we've just started kicking off the year. And no, we've not looked to how to neutralize our budget. I think this multi-year financial forecast are, is going to provide a number of the tools and the insights that will help the council, um, get a handle on that. And while I'm speaking, the, the other issue is purchasing policies. Our, uh, requisition process and purchasing policies is way out of date. Um, and we have staff that could support this a bit, um, but it seems like a, uh, one of those quiet risk areas that needs attention. And, uh, the cost on that, I had gotten, um, a proposal. And it ranged in the twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollar price range, um, up to fifty. But I think the thirty-five thousand was it, uh, was, would give us probably most everything we needed. Because we have someone on staff that can help guide that. The multi-year forecast, I, I don't have a cost on that yet.
My, my two cents, uh, no pun intended, uh, on these two would be, for the, the purchasing, uh, procedures and policy update, if it's going to be somewhere between, you know, thirty and fifty thousand, it would be interesting to know how much we think we might save in doing that, um, to really see if that's a worthwhile endeavor. But, but certainly for, um, certainly for F eight, I, I would be interested, uh, in, you know, Mr. City Manager, however you feel we should move forward to, to begin the efforts to address, uh, our operations budgeting and balances. And what, you know, what are the options that need to come before council? So we don't wait until right before the mid buy. I feel like this is something that's probably going to take a while. And we should definitely start that effort and start those conversations early and often.
Oh, I don't see any other, uh, hands up right now. So let me, uh, respond. Um, I would agree. I just need a kind of a thumbs up from the council. And I will do, uh, an outreach to this consultant who's, like I said, familiar here. They're well known. It's a management partners firm. Uh, the person is based in, in Washington. And on the purchasing procedures, it's not an issue of how much money we could save. It's an issue of risk reduction to making sure that, uh, staff is following proper procedures and that our bidding procedures and our proper paperwork and processes are, aligned with best practices. And because this hasn't been done in quite a long time, um, I think it's a low frequency, high risk area. Um, we had.
So there is potential savings because if we have risks, right, we could have some sort of legal risk which would cost. So that, that seems reasonable. My comment for F eight would be that should probably go out for an RFP, that I don't know that we want to single source that, that we should, you know, potentially put that out to bid and see, um, who else might, might have, you know, expertise and experience in doing that.
That, that is a, a debatable, uh, issue. We certainly get a proposal. My thought was that these other two cities, uh, did that just recently. And so, um, getting somebody who's familiar with processes and all of that. I'm just not looking for somebody who can do financial forecasting. I need somebody. I think we need somebody who can understand the municipal side of things, but possibly, uh, there are others out there. But on the purchasing procedures, sure, um, you're going to have cost savings from a, doing your bids correctly or making sure that everything's in line. It's just an intangible.
Good questions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions on anything in the finance, F one through F eight? Chris, are you saying something?
No, I'm saying something. Uh, I do want to, um, s- suggest we pursue both F seven and F eight. I think it really is the next step to be, um, best of class. We've got a best of class performing finance team. And this is one step to make, uh, Samamis State Yard. Internal controls are important. That, you know, it doesn't happen all the time, but it can really bite you, um, in a, in a significant way, as well as reputation for the city. Multi-year financial forecast, it, it helps us significantly in planning our multi-year planning. It addresses reserves. It also points out when we're going to get into a, uh, one-time funding situation when reserves are depleted, when you match up the tip and the CIP plans with that multi-year. So I think that's a critical option. It helps the city better plan its priorities. And priorities should be planned longer term, not just within the next two years. So support both.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, seeing no more hands up, so to speak. Let's go ahead and roll into the next category.
All right, only two more left. Uh, now we are on the focus area called High Performing and Secure Government. This includes, uh, looking at G one, some emergency management grants, uh, Public Works Project Management Manual, the Union Contract Electronic Records Management Portal, uh, the 2021 State Legislative Session. And yet again, three more optional projects here, uh, citywide strategic planning, which, uh, is a topic I think is, which is coming up next. So we may want to, uh, withhold some conversation for that. But, uh, uh, G seven here, strategic planning for administrative functions. And then G eight, facilitated communication and trust building. And then in it, in this area, we also have some capital projects, uh, for MOC improvements, the community center, coding and repair for the parking structure, city hall renovations, and Boys and Girls Club parking lot reconfiguration. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Is, is Andrew Stevens online with us today?
Andrew is not on the call today.
City manager, you might be able to, on the option, G six, citywide strategic planning. In that, would that also include, actually setting up a simulated situation and then actually having it take place?
Uh, no, that, that would be, uh, a separate emergency planning effort. Andrew and I have talked about, uh, being more proactive. In two years, we've got Cascadia rising again, or in one.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, we've discussed, and I want to take the city to a much more involved level. Weighing size, availability of staff, but, um, getting more engaged and staff familiar. and staff familiar with EOC operations, coordination, coordinating with the county. That's a, that's a separate issue than the citywide strategic planning. Citywide strategic planning, I can speak to in a few minutes. But they are separate issues.
Separate. And, and then in that, maybe I'm just kind of going backwards on this, but it, so like the idea of like need for equipment such as like example would be like satellite phones. And then who would have them and how do you station that? And what about hand radios during, is that all separate as well?
Yes, yes, that's an emergency planning effort. And we've got approved consultant, we've got a grant that will be doing, looking at some of our regional hazards. And they'll help us with that. And this is all part of, all part of that.
So then what is G6? When, when you look at G6, can you just fill me in a little bit more on what that would entail?
Okay. A recap, I, I spoke a little bit about this during the budget process. For me, the city is 20 years old and a strategic planning process should be done at least every five years or so significantly revisited. But you revisit something like this in the, in the budget cycle in off years so that you get things in alignment. What it means basically strategic planning is it's bringing in outside stakeholders. That's key stakeholders out of the community. Key stakeholders within the organization, the staff, the council, and you look at your mission, vision and values of the organization. And while those sound cliche, they're very important. They're very important for the community business and community citizens to be able to align and understand where the council is going. You know, it's sort of like, you know, yoga, Yogi Berra saying, you know, when I get to the fork in the road, I take it. You've got to know where you're going in order to know when you get there. And so you do your mission, vision and values, and then you establish, establish your goals and your objectives. And in municipal government, goals don't really change from year to year. They're pretty well established and they may change every few years. And then you've got objectives underneath that. Underneath that is where you're aligning your work plans. And much of what we are doing in this alignment today, it should be done in a process. It's a reconfirmation of what is done out of your strategic planning and your budget development follows that. So it's a whole completely different process. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of effort. But that's how it differentiates from emergency planning.
Right.
And hazard mitigation. Emergency planning would be one of the objectives in a work plan underneath and objectives that set out there under your, your general goals of public safety.
Correct. And then the other two are kind of do those. When, okay, not that they tie together. That's okay. So recommended as best practices is on all three of these. So as an educator, when I want to have the best results with my students, I do best practices. So I'm imagining these are being offered or put on here because they are best practices and it's something that either we're not doing or could do better and we should be doing these. For, so that we have the best, we have a really good city, right? I mean, that's, I, is that why you're putting these on here? Because you see these as best practices and therefore we get the best results for the citizens.
That's exactly right. Like I mentioned in the budget process, when we were talking about goals and that sort of thing and priorities. I, I use the analogy as I parachuted in from, you know, 50,000 feet in a high-low descent and landed in some amish. Now I, I need to carry out my mission. So where's my strategic plan? Where do I get oriented to a process that the council has weighed in on, on a mission, vision and values and goals and objectives? I want to grab that, study it and meet with my team and then meet with the council. And it, and it doesn't exist. So you, you work with the tools you have. And, and that's when I said, okay, I went, looked at past budgets. I looked at the most current budget. I, I went back and looked at films, talked to the council, listened to what was going on, tried to get some analysis out of studying agendas, talking with the staff and tried to formulate a plan. And so the strategic planning is, is the beginning. It's a very important element. And then followed up with your strategic planning for administrative functions. A number of the departments have gone through their own little bit of internal strategic planning. We would revisit those and align those with the strategic plan. But it gets the departments in the mode of planning and not just reactive budgeting. And, and then, and it draws the council in as the next step. Because you know, that's so critically, of critical importance because you're the policy setters. You, you need to know and see how that ties together. And the facilitated communication and trust building is a carrying on of, of what we're doing here today. And I, and I hope the council will look at coming back together and say 60 days revisiting what we talked about. Re-engaging and taking a look back and saying, are we staying on point? How are we to go for a next step? That's
That's the, the, so as has been stated during our budgeting process. You know, it's kind of that sometimes there has to be a give and a take. Is, is this one of those items or are these three items, are these? If we do these and say, yeah, this, we want these on the work plan, does it mean that then we're, we need to take away something else?
No, I don't, I don't think we take away something else. It, it, it helps gauge. It, it helps set the tone and the direction of where we're going. Otherwise I, I feel, you know, everybody's trying to do the best they can. But we are making a lot of assumptions of what that direction is. This will help, these things will help solidify the direction, build confidence in, in the council with the staff, that your staff knows where they're going. It builds confidence in the staff. The council has laid out the direction and they are check-in points. They are guideposts. What other analogies you want to use in setting the direction and the pace?
And then every, every three months to four months, when needed, we would then facilitate this communication kind of similar to what we're doing today to, i- if, if guideposts have to be changed. One year from now, we have, have to do some budget adjustments. So because we now have citywide strategic planning in place and that the strategic planning for the functions that are going on in the city, we can say, oh, so then I could, you could see a, as the manager that there's a need here. And, and so then as the legislative body, we could come and say, okay, yeah, we see that need as well. Here's the funding for it or here's the change in the plan so that we can meet that need at that time. Is that
Gives you a vision. Right now. Everybody has a vision. Maybe some of folks, folks are more long vision, more short vision. Some things are clear, some things are foggy. This helps clarify it and make it more vivid. And everybody gets to see it because everybody's participated in creating that vision and setting the direction. And we can continue to look at it and say, we want to vary a couple of degrees this way or that way, but we know where true north is.
Well, I would, I would then, to finish this little bit of the conversation Dave with you is that, and with the rest of the council. This is the very first time I spoke in public comment to the council was I just, I just wanted to know what the vision of the, what, what are you doing? Where are you going? And that way, as, as a resident at that time, it was, that's what, then I would know what to do with, with my property or with my life or what I'm going to do within the city. I think this is critical, to be honest with you. I, I am all for for us taking these three options and, and inserting these into our work plan and, and having staff, have Dave and his staff figure out how they can work in. Cause if you, if you marry this up with a vision statement that we can all come to a synthesizing of visions even for the comp plan and then the people know where we're headed as a council. That's, that's a win-win.
Thank you. I see Pam has her hand raised. Your turn.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Dave, you said that we wouldn't have to take anything else off the agenda or the work plan to do this. I'm just curious if it's going to go back and look at and, you know, potentially realign some of the other strategic plans that some of the departments have put together. Some of those were multi-year, pretty heavy lift. So I'm just curious how we would go about doing this without impacting other things. And if we do have, like we have a pro plan and we have some of those other things. And we know that parks and like the stormwater areas are the places where we're already having to make the trade-offs. You know, can we do this in a way that we aren't impacting those things? Because I think there's a lot of work to be done around, you know, environmental stuff, maybe some of the climate change and the stormwater stuff and a lot of the parks work. I just wouldn't want to see us derail that. Is this something that you could lay out for us a plan of how, how you see this being accomplished? While not impacting those other things. I mean, I, I think having this would be great. I know when Larry was here, he tried to pull together kind of a, document that did just what you described, right? Where we have these sort of major buckets of things and then goals. And then below that, what are all the projects and tasks to accomplish those? So I, I think that would be great to get us all rowing in the same direction. I'm just more curious what your approach would be there to make sure we aren't disrupting the departments that are already potentially overtaxed.
Well, I, I would, I would hire consultant help that do this on a, a regular basis. But I'm not for reinventing the wheel. I'm, I'm not sure how else to reassure you, but reinventing the wheel is, is not is not what I'm, I would be focusing, focusing on. There's a lot of good work that has been done. And you figure out how that fits into the strategic plan, citywide strategic planning. Doesn't mean that you have to redo it, but you do check in to make sure that those strategic plans are in alignment with the, the now established goals and objectives that you and the council body have set out. Let me just use an example of, you, you had this, you know, I'm not throwing stones or anything, but it just pops into my head, Kohani. Staff saw a vision and they, they saw needs that they felt were necessary. And they went about doing a master plan for Kohani that was rejected. If we had something like that, that was in, and forgive me, Anjali, just using an example over there. Your, you and your staff are fantastic. But let's say you had something that was already developed or you're working on that was in a similar sort of Kohani fashion. And the council said, we, in their goals and objectives was clearly different. Well, then we would take that and we would shelve it because it's not in alignment. But I think most things would probably fall into alignment. But it, it doesn't mean we just accept it because we invested a couple of years on an internal strategic plan in a department and say, well, we're just going to adopt it. We, we revisit all of that and, and strategic plans should be revisited. They, they get revisited every two years in your biennial budget process. Most likely in your off years. So you've got things lined up and committed to so that your budget process isn't interrupted and it runs more smoothly, but you revisit these things every couple of years. So once you establish it, things start to align and fall into place. So the initial time or year or two is that it takes to bring all of this together. You might have some things that go in the round file.
Yeah, I, I think it would be great if we can, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, so the purpose is not to start from scratch all over the place. It's not
That would be great. And yeah, because I would love to see us use the, some of the really great data that we captured. I know like for the pro plan, there was really great community engagement and input there. It's, it sounds like community development is going to do some more community outreach. So I think if we could use that data to inform this, I think that would be great.
Yes. And, and, and we would do that. It's like, it's not about reinventing the wheel or just putting a new, so we have to redo it because this is, this is what the council told us to do. We, we don't have time to waste. The resources are fragile and very limited. And recognizing that it's an investment in doing these things in money, treasure resources. But it's, it's not reinventing the wheel. We don't even have the wheel. We need to go buy the wheel and shape it. And, and anyway, I don't know if that's a good analogy or not, but we don't have any sort of strategic planning for the city. But there's a lot of the other underlying ones.
Thanks, Dave. All right. Any other questions on G1 through G8? Excellent. We'll move down to the capital project portion, G9 through 12.
I have a question, and this is probably even more broad than this because I think it would include the like the, the renovation on, on maybe the, you know, anything that we're renovating really. Dave, is it your, do we, do we have an ability to be looking at, and we talked about this, I want to say a couple of years ago at our retreat. Making sure we do assessments from a sustain, an environmental sustainability perspective. Again, it may require some additional initial investments, but if we are renovating like the maintenance and operations center and centers, you know, are we looking at using the latest and greatest technology in terms of, you know, solar panels or, you know, putting in water recirculation systems, insulation, just all the stuff that, to make these as environmentally friendly and sustainable over the long-term possible. I would just, I would love it if that could just be incorporated into how we do some of these things because I, I think it would be nice if the community had the opportunity to say, yeah, I'm willing to spend an extra 10 or 1,000 or whatever that number is today. But we will make that money back over five years because we'll have less energy costs and, and maybe the intangible positive impacts on the environment.
I'm going to let Anjali weigh in here because she, she worked so closely with Sebda. But generally speaking, for example, on the fire stations. Um, but generally speaking, um, for example, on the fire stations. Uh, when we are looking at the fire station, the architects, um, had a lot of that in mind. Building codes require it and it was to a much lesser degree, but, um. This, the staff is conscious about that. Have we gone to, uh, the next level of seeing what? Other things we could do. I, I don't know that we've really done that yet, but Anjali, could you weigh in?
Sure, I can do that. So, um, I can speak for the fire station renovation that one of the things we would, uh. Be looking to do is upgrading the mechanical and electrical systems because they are so outdated. They aren't energy efficient. Um, but most of the renovations, like the M O C is a fairly new building. We are adding. An outbuilding for additional parking for the vehicles and, um, adding one office room. So there isn't, uh. Too much scope in some of these projects, like the traffic coating repairs, the city hall renovations is, you know, moving partitions in more interior work. But for the fire station renovation, yes, we would be looking at more efficient systems.
Okay, I, I just like to ask, I mean, efficiency is one thing, but there's like. What the building code requires, there's maybe a little bit more, you know, it's energy star rated or something. And then there's like the latest available science that again, it may cost a little bit more today, but the payback is pretty huge. Um, and so that's what I would love is for us to look at. You know, how do we, how do we do that kind of an assessment on these projects? Um, so we can make those decisions, pay a little bit more today, but over 10 years, we save money and we save the planet all at the same time.
Okay, well, we're gathering costs on that and, um, you know, our eyeballs are rolling back in our head a little bit because of, uh, some of the costs. But we'll, we'll ask the architects about that, um, and so that we, we probe that.
Thanks, Dave. All right, anything, go ahead, Karen.
Pam, it may be easier if we come up with a, a list of things that we'd like for the, um, the consultants, whoever they're going to have, you know. A list of things for them to look at or look for when they're doing these so that they can. Um, they can say, oh, that's not going to work price-wise or this building just wouldn't be able to have that on the roof or, yeah, that would work. This won't work. Um, but, you know, if we have something in mind, maybe we should put together that list.
That would always be.
Yeah, definitely.
That might be a little bit easier than to just say, you know, send them out, um, and say, well, we can talk to the architect. Because, you know, if we have something in mind, we should just put together the list. So, um, I'm willing to, I mean, if you want to start a list, I think that we can work on a list together and then we can pass it around the council and everybody's. Put in there, you know, two cents worth and, um, because then they can look at what works and what doesn't.
I think that's a great idea, Mayor. I will, uh, I will reach out and let's work on that together. Thank you.
Nice, thanks. All right, anybody else? Um, anything, G nine through G twelve? Or G one to G twelve, I guess. Okay. Nice work. Uh, let me check in, uh, wondering if you need a, a 10-minute stretch break right now? Or if we wanted to kind of go, yes, I'm seeing some thumbs up. So, uh, let's go ahead and, um, take that now and just to make it even. Give you a 13-minute stretch break. Let's come back at 2:30 and we will pick up transportation then. All right? So 2:30, have a nice, uh, 12-minute break. And I'm going to pause recording. Resume recording. Okay, so welcome back and, uh, Mike, you want to take us to the transportation page here?
Sure thing. Yeah, this is our last, uh, focus area that we have and. Uh, under studies, plans and other operating items, we have of course the E I S project as well as the park system wayfinding program. Capital projects include Iskow Falls City Road, Sahali, sidewalk program and, uh, I T S on 228th and Sahali. So with that, I will open it for questions.
Pam.
Yeah, uh, I, I know this is contentious and it's honestly not intended to be. I just think for T one. Um, as we've been talking about on all of our other initiatives today. I do think we should, you know, make sure that we're including the data. I am not implying, uh, that we should do. Make any decision one way or the other. I do think that we should make sure we have data from the community in terms of what the housing needs are. And that we should make sure that whatever we're doing to update our, um, comp plan. Is making sure that we are addressing those housing needs. So, you know, do we have the right balance? I don't know. I don't know if we need to build more of any particular type of housing. I don't think we have that data. I think we should be getting that data. I think if we're doing community outreach, we should make sure that we're getting all of that data. So that again, we can make data-driven decisions. I think we have a lot of emotions that run really high in the city around certain things. And it would be great if we could get a pivot to a more data-driven, um, decision-making process. So we don't have to get caught up in the emotions and then maybe it would, uh, help to ease some of the tensions.
I don't know who was next. I saw Christie's hand, but I also physically saw Karen, so.
Uh, Christie go.
Okay, Christie and then Karen.
Yeah, so, um, you know, this, this particular item, T one, where we're talking about the E I S. It has a specific goal and that is, you know, we're evaluating the, um. You know, impact from, you know, our, our transportation, um, standpoint for what is currently slated to go. Um, in and, and there is, um. You know, in the town center plan, for example, there is a myriad type of choices for housing there. What we're trying to do is determine, you know, do our roadways have adequate? Um, or what do we do in order to, you know, ca- can we do anything? I, you know, one can argue that, um, you know, Sammamish Incorporated, you know, 20 years ago. And, um, there was a lot of development up on the plateau long before the city incorporated. Not all of it was great planning, frankly. Um, and so we're trying to figure out. Um, the best path forward, um, for our existing residents and any new residents that come into the city. Um, I'm not willing to park anything in advance of the completion of this E I S. Because I think we need this information first before we move forward with understanding what more we might need. When we can't, we're having a hard time fitting the existing, um, trips up here on the plateau. So I, I think this. Um, goes first. We need a determination through this E I S, um, first and then. Um, you know, then we can start making some decisions once we have data back from the E I S. So that's my, my position.
Thanks, Christie. I saw Karen's next, then Ken, and then back to Pam. Go ahead, Karen.
Um, well, yes, I, I want, I want to, I, I can only duplicate what Christie just said, but. You know, as one of the two people that filed the paperwork to incorporate the city, there was no. There was no planning. There was no planning involved at all. The county just dumped everything. Um, so, yeah, there was no planning whatsoever. They just dumped a little here, dumped a little there. Um, and they didn't put any roads or anything in. So this is, um, this, uh. Balance of land use and mobility E I S is, is way past due, way, way past due. And it should have been done, to me, the, the fact that it wasn't done, but at the E I S, there was an E I S done of just. The inside of town center is like, to me, having a house and deciding to rebuild your kitchen. But forgetting to check if it fits in the house when you're done. It's just ridiculous. So we need to do this first and then. We can go back and we can start looking at the other things. Um, but to me, this is, uh, we have to do this part first. Before we can start answering any other questions.
Thanks, Karen. Ken.
Yeah, so, um, both Christie and Karen bring up very salient points. The I S was scoped for a very specific reason, looking at our circumstances here. And making determination if what we have on our books works. That's what we're concentrating on now. So the idea of going back and contemplating a. Drastic change in what's out there, which is what has been being proposed lately. That we look at a drastic upzone of the town center area and a drastic downzone of the rest of the city. It doesn't accomplish what the E I S was scoped to accomplish. Um, and quite frankly, um, it is inappropriate to be looking at that, um, at this juncture now. If at all, since that has never been proposed by any council that I know of in the past, any, um, any group of residents. So I would, um, say that what we are doing right now is a correct thing. The E I S is proposed right now, um, should be worked through and that we not look at. Um, any of these big upzones and downzones that are being proposed, um, until, um, that's finished and we handle one thing at a time. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Pam, you were next.
Yeah, this is exactly why I'm so happy that we're having this conversation because, um. I feel very misunderstood because I didn't propose any upzones or downzones. I proposed that we go gather data to understand what the housing needs are. And compare that to what the plans are. Um. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if we have a housing imbalance. Maybe our plan. Uh, you know, in terms of what our zoning is, is already what the community needs. I don't know. And I'm not proposing anything. I don't want anyone to imply that I'm proposing any upzoning. Uh, I want to be very crystal clear. I am not proposing any zoning changes. I am proposing that we go gather data from the community. On what the housing needs are. We have. I have friends who personally had to leave the, the city because when they got divorced, there weren't housing options for them to be able to support. Two households and they had to, in the middle of a divorce, move their kids to new school districts. Those are just some of the examples of the housing. Types of needs that we have. I don't know if we have the right things. I just want us to collect the data. And I think that the request for T one is to make sure that one of the options we look at. Is looking at what the housing needs are and what the road needs would be or the transportation needs would be. To support those housing needs and how do we strike that balance? Again, I'm not jumping to any conclusions. I don't want to jump to conclusions. I want data to make good decisions. So I just want to get that out there and make sure that, that we clarify that. Thanks.
Thanks, Pam. I see Karen's hand raised. Go ahead, Karen.
Um, I think that if we're going to get into the, um. The wants and the needs, then the other part of that is to get the information from, uh, the builders that build here to find out what people are asking for. And I know the builders have that, so I, I, I would just say we'd have to get that as well. But I don't know if that's a focus that anybody wants to go down right now. I mean, we've got the E I S with this and, I mean, but. You know, to, to Pam's point, that's, that's one side and then we'd have to also get of what people are asking for here.
If, if I may, um, Madam Mayor, I, I think you're right. That's probably a component of it. But that, I think, looks more towards the, the growth of people who aren't here yet. Um, and I think that. Um, we should first and foremost be looking to meet the needs of the people who are already here. So aging populations. People who may have changing situations. Do we want to have housing options for our young adults who are growing up? And they want to be able to have housing options in the city and supporting the businesses that are already. Um, certainly, you know, if we think that getting data from the builders is part of that. Um, I'm not the expert, so I don't know if that's the right type of data to get. I would look to staff. Um, to determine if that's the right kind of data, but I just, I just want to know what, what is needed to meet the needs of our community.
Thanks, Pam. Christie, your hand is raised. And then Karen, did you want to say something after that? Okay.
So. But I go back and forth, so never mind.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, I, I think it's important from the, the standpoint of setting our priorities to say, you know. Yes, we want to do what we have listed here as T one, which is basically the completion of the E I S. I'm favorable to completing the E I S. I am not favorable to studying. And it's not that I don't want to know what people want, but I'll be frank with you all. I think that back in 2008. I think when they put the town center plan together, I think they went out and asked people what they wanted. And that's what came into this plan. If we're going to go back and say, hey, what does everyone want? It's not just going to be about what type of housing you want. It's the whole kit and caboodle. So if we want to, you know, break open the whole town center plan, I think that's, you know, a totally different story. I think really it's imperative that we just simply complete this E I S, which is looking what's already in the plan. And then let's evaluate what those strategies are at the conclusion of that and then, you know, make your next move. Um, whether that's, you know, study, if, I would argue, we can't just study housing as part of, you know. If we're going to like look at things and, and types of housing needs that the community, you know, wants, there's a lot more to putting a plan together. Than just that one singular component. And, you know, I'd also argue that the, you know, the town center plan is probably completely dated. At this point, um, our population has doubled since that time. Um, and so, you know, I think, again, as far as our 2021 work plan goes. This E I S is, is, needs to be completed first without getting distracted with any other, um, items. That could be generated from this particular discussion. Otherwise, we are upending our own process. By parking something and else in, in front of it. So again, I am not favorable to what council member Stewart is. Is, is, you know, proposing, we look at right now because I think the timing is just off in consideration of the E I S that we are in the middle of.
Thanks, Christie. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, and I'd like to expand on what Mayor Moran said about developers. Even if we have a different defined needs and wants, it really isn't what going to result in what the needs and wants. It's what builders will build. And talking to many builders in the price of property in Sammamish, they won't build certain sizes, certain areas. And some have told me they don't even want to develop in the town center because they can't find a, a profitable enterprise. They're in the business to make a profit. And they're not going to do just what the people ask for. They'll do what they can make money at. So there's an incongruence by the market that, um, a survey would, um. Have a hard time overcoming for the needs or wants.
Thanks, Chris. Ken.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, again, you know, we, we have our E I S, it's in process, it's being, it's been scoped. To, to go trying to throw a bunch more stuff on top of it and in it and decide we want to add this and want to add that and add the other. Um, it's inappropriate at this time. Um, just stick to course of what we're doing is what I would advise.
I saw Kent go next.
Yeah, thank you, uh, council member Ross. I really like, yeah, it's the market drives. Um, we're, we're a free enterprise country, so, uh. You know, the builders are going to build what they're going to build because it's what the people want. And, uh, the people that are here, here, here's a challenge that I have is, it, well, I've sat on the Puget Sound Region Council. And been to those meetings, right? So all you have to do, if we go look at their maps and their data for 2050. Uh, their vision already for the region is. Uh, their vision already for the region is we're a bedroom community. All right. So if you, if, if it's a high rise or even some of the low income housing, we figured that's going to be really challenging for us. And so that's going to be, uh, those needs are going to be met outside, most likely outside the city limits. And then I would follow up with, uh, just ditto or to agree and, uh, with, uh, council member gambling in that, look. It's been scoped. Uh, it's about transportation. It, uh, our levels of service. It, it does have an element in there that's housing. And so it's going to help that the data collected from the EIS is going to help us. Determine the path forward. And, and my hope is that it's with the idea that. We provide just a step up more importance to the environment. Versus the other seven, six items in our comprehensive plan. Not that it's way more important, but that it's just a step more important than, than the, than the other items. So I hope we, I hope, and then we're just going to wait for the data from the EIS. What does that mean? What does that look like going forward? Thank you. My only, oh, one last thing. I, I, the only question I have really is, can it happen before October? And that'd be a question maybe to staff who's going to be leading that, but.
That's a good question.
You know, I. It'd be okay if it wasn't, but wow, how really it's January. So that's a long time. I get it. It's complex and stuff and there's a lot of pieces to it, but, uh, if it could happen before October, I would, I'd be overjoyed. Thank you.
Who, is there someone here in the room that can help answer that question?
And I'm, and I'm okay with no, right? I'm okay with no, it can't happen before October. All right. I'm okay with that. It just.
Sure, sure. It's just a question on the table. So Jeff, did I see you take your, are you someone that can help answer that?
Uh, myself or maybe David Pyle. I'm wondering if he would want to weigh in. If not, I can.
I'm happy to weigh in. I, I mean, we, so, so we did present this as part of the Burke contract amendment and we did walk through the timeline. We've looked at it every which way, trying to find ways to, to, to shorten the timeline. And EIS has to follow state law and there's a prescriptive process that goes along with it. And we have already trimmed it down as much as we possibly can to still feel like we are compliant with the process that goes along with an EIS. Because there are multiple check-in points and it's kind of like feeding things through a funnel. Um, and as you sort of narrow it down, you start to study things with more detail. It, it's really important that we have the ability to analyze different impacts and that we're not rushing it. And it's so based on state law and what state law dictates as far as the process. It is the shortest possible timeframe that we can provide.
Thank you, David.
Excellent. So Kent or Christie, your hands are still raised. Do you have anything in addition that you need? Okay. So it appears what I've been hearing in the conversation that, um, even though some additional asks were made of some data. It seems to me that more so the group, the, the council is saying, let's keep that, this line item clean, the way it looks. Uh, and that I think in one of the additional questions that Mike is going to ask is, you know, what are some additions? What are some additional things that you're looking for? And that might be a place to kind of weave in if that's something that. You want to consider finding, you know, finding out information. Does that make sense? So it doesn't seem to, you know, we've got the clarification for this, uh, for the, for T one that I think you were looking for. So are there other questions for T one through T six? Okay. So Mike, take us to the next set of, the next question. Oh, wait, Pam, sorry. Go ahead.
One quick, one quick question. I see that we have the, um, the safety improvements for Sahali Way. And I was just curious, does that, um, does that include, um, looking at a stoplight at the crest?
Councilmember Stewart, Jeff Hellekis, uh, let me go back and double check that. Um, I believe it was, that could be the case, but I want to just double check that and I can report back to you.
I think Jeff. That's great. Really, really quick, actually.
Uh, if you. Go ahead, Danica.
Yeah. Um, so I think I'm like 99% sure I have the correct answer for this. But it's the, the two studies for the signalization of two of the intersections. That's for the 2022 work plan. We don't have any budget or staff resources for those, uh, those intersection evaluations this year. So we kept that off the work plan to keep this streamlined for council.
Okay. Do we have data? I don't, and, and we may have had this before, but do we have data on, you know, incidents and accidents and, and complaints on those areas to know if. If 2022 is soon enough from a safety perspective. Again, this is purely just safety issues here, not. No other, no other agendas here, just worrying about, about safety.
I'll have to research that, um, once again.
Okay.
Sorry, don't know all the informations, but I, I can, I can come back with you once I have more information.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions? T one through G six. All right. So just checking in Pam, your hand is still raised. Is that from the previous question? Excellent. Okay. Well, I think, I think we're good, Mike, with the first run through of all of these. The next question on the table, back to you.
Before I jump to the next question, I also just wanted to point out, we don't, uh, we're running a little bit short on time. So we don't have to talk through all them individually. But if there were any questions about the three-year cap calendars that we included at the end of the attachment. We could briefly touch on those. Uh, otherwise we can move on to our next question. So we, we had, you know, transportation, stormwater capital. Parks capital and facilities capital. So if you had a chance to look at those and you have any questions for us right now, uh, maybe we could go ahead and address those or we could just move on.
No questions from me.
Thanks, Kent. Ken says no. Karen's good. Chris, I can see part of your head. Sounds like that is yes, meaning you're good. What, what does yes mean?
Yeah, let's move on.
Great.
Great. Counsel, this is, this is very important. I just want to intercede. We really appreciate your attention to this. Staff really, uh, needs it. I need it so that we can, uh. Plan our year and get things done for you.
Thanks, Dave. And then Pam, you're the last one to weigh in that I haven't seen. Are you, are you good with, uh? Any questions on this three-year calendar?
Yeah, if I have specific questions, I'll fill up an email. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. So I think that was everybody. Um, so let's move on to our next question and thank you for all the great discussion and. Questions that we had on the work plan focus areas. And now that we've had an opportunity to review all those projects and answer questions, our next discussion prompt is. Do we need to add, remove, or adjust any work plan items? For example, was there an item that you expected to see on the list that wasn't included? Um, I know we talked about a few potential additions already and those primarily related to the seven optional projects, which I've just consolidated here. On its own page, just the optional, optional projects. E eight, environment eight was the hydrology study. I, I recorded in my notes, there was strong council interest in that one. E nine, uh, also a lot of interest, but potentially pending further discussion, uh, at the upcoming council meeting. So I'm not sure if we're ready on that one yet. Maybe we could. Uh, address that. And then, uh, more info on, uh, joining the, uh, initiative on the greenhouse gas data collection effort. So we're going to follow up with some information on that. I'm not sure if that's in addition to the work plan at this point or not yet. Uh, it didn't sound like it was quite baked, uh, baked, baked enough for the work plan. On F seven, financial status, financial sustainability, seven and eight. Councilmember Ross expressed interest in those two optional projects, seven and eight. Um, but I didn't hear any other, uh, members feedback on those two. There was also some discussion on the high performing government optional projects, G six through G eight. I, I know that Kent, uh, was interested in, in, in doing some of those. And then the other thing I noted was, uh, some discussion about the dog park project as a potential addition. Um, my notes say right now that may just be a parking lot item for the council calendar. Again, may not be ready, uh, yet for the priorities list. So those were some of the notes that I had. Uh, I think most of the additions that we've talked about related to the optional lists. With some, uh, extra discussion. If I missed anything, please, please do correct me. So I'd just like to open it up and ask again, do we need to add, remove, or adjust any work plan items, including these optional items?
Christie first and then Ken.
Yeah. So I, I hate to go backwards, but I was trying to scroll through this one. So on the store, stormwater capital projects through your calendar. The first item there, SWO one says it's on hold and I wanted just to get clarification as to. Why it's on hold?
Danica, is that yours?
I was going to say, do you want me to take a stab at that one?
Yes, please.
Um, that one, um, has been on a bit of a hold for the last couple of years. Um, and really what, um, what I've seen and council can correct me if I'm wrong in my interpretation here. Is that that is pending an actual MOU between the developer and the city. And, and my understanding from, from what I've seen is that that MOU has not moved forward. And so without that, there cannot be a private public partnership to work on a regional stormwater, uh, project.
Okay, that, that makes sense, but there I also recall, and I know this predates a lot of our council members that are currently on the council. But there was the option of the city moving forward with regional stormwater without an MOU. And then, you know, there would obviously similar to on Southeast Fourth where we went and put all the frontage improvements as developed, come, development comes in. They reimburse us because they don't have to put in the frontage improvement some, somewhat similar to if we front the costs for stormwater. As development comes in, they will have to pay the city back because we've already put the, the structure in. I think. My concern with this being on perpetual hold is that we have the scenario where our regional stormwater plan is not. Necessarily something that comes to fruition when we have development applications come in. And I don't think we want to see all these little individual stormwater vaults. And so if we want to avoid that scenario, council needs to press forward with a regional stormwater plan. And if we cannot do that with a public, private partnership, then we need to go on it on our own or we are not going to get what we want. So I might suggest this should not be on hold any longer.
I would second that.
Uh, I agree. And I, I don't know that we need to give up on the pu- public, private partnership. I think we just need to press forward with developing a plan. And looking at who we can partner with to pay for it. But I, I definitely think with all the stormwater work we're doing, we need to press forward.
Yeah. Thanks, Christie. I think Ken was next.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll speak to Christie's, um, statement. And, and I agree, we, we can't be hanging out. And on eternal hold because we can't get an MOU and a partner, the private sector on this is just way too important. And quite frankly, you know, it, it's going to be limiting because, you know, managing stormwater to a, um, a private partner, a developer. Is always going to be on the expense side rather than the revenue side. So, you know, their excitement on doing something like that, um, is, is going to be lusher than we might hope. So, uh, again, as to Christie's point, that it, that may not be very well appearing, and I don't think it's appeared in the past. So we can't hang our hat on trying to find a, a partner on that. So I, I would 100% support, um, Christie. She always seems to get her. Her, um, hand up just slightly before I do. So it's not that I am waiting to support everything she says. It's just, um, anyway, that's the order. So. I would, um, I would support that. And as long as I'm speaking, if on, on the, on the next chart that we were looking at. I think it was F, F nine, was it Mike?
There are a couple here under financial.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. Yeah. So E nine, but by the way, um, quick statement, Mike, you, you're just freaking amazing. You, you, the way you get this together, the amount of work that you do, your, um, your, your, your calmness, your demeanor. You, how you present, um, you're just a real plus to the city. So anyway, enough of that. E nine, I, I think it was fairly unambiguous that that was something that, uh, we wanted to pursue. I understand it's, um. Coming up soon, but, uh, I would just like to reiterate that. And if you need to have other people speak to it, I think E nine was pretty unambiguous. That is something we want to pursue. F seven and F eight, uh, you, you mentioned that only that Chris had mentioned that if we look back at our recent, um, budget trials and. Travails going back and forth, it seems that, um, council member Ross has, has put his finger on something that probably should get some more attention. Um, by the, so we don't get into that same situation of, of, um, of, um, I don't even know what to call being unclear. On our, what we're doing in our process and extending that out to a multi-year forecast. So, um, I, I would support having, um, some attention paid to both F seven and F eight. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. All right. Jeff, you popped in next with your hand up and then Kelly.
Uh, yeah, I, with the, I was, I was not aware of the town center one, uh, that was on hold. And for, you know, us to bring that back, um, we will need a little bit of time and energy to assess what has to, you know. Give or how we begin to do that one. E eight and E nine will be a huge lift for us anyway. Um, and this one here, uh, not that we don't want to do it, not my point. But I haven't even talked to Danica about, well, what does this really mean? And how big was this and those kinds of things? So we'll need a little bit of patience or grace to figure this out and bring back to you the plan or strategy. That seems to make the best sense with all the things that we are trying to accomplish. Um, and I, I can't answer that right now. So I just want to let you know that this one would be, um, definitely over the edge for us. And I don't know what needs to give or how we do that just yet, but we want to accomplish it if we can't, I mean, because it's policy and guidance from the council. But just recognize it may take a little bit for us to get back to you, um, with the right plan for that.
Yeah, understood Jeff, just as long as there's not a, an indefinite on hold like we see now, um, you know, just some understanding. Of, of action on that at some point, but understand you can't jump into it on Monday.
Not even Tuesday, but maybe Wednesday.
You guys are all remarkable. I love it. Thanks Jeff for that. Kelly.
Yes, um, I wanted to also provide some background. I totally agree with Jeff on staff capacity. This is work, and I did mention this earlier, um, this afternoon. This is work that, um, our staff began in 2017 and 18 with a feasibility study of regional stormwater. For the town center where we talked about, um, some initial concepts and financial planning. And there, yes, there was some interest, um, by the city council at that time to move forward with that. Um, and, uh, this is a big lift and it would need some staff support on it. We do have a start and we'd need to dust off where we left off, um, for sure. And then coordinating that with some of the other storm wa- water work, um, that is on the work plan too. I think we need to, uh, take a look at that and evaluate where this would best fit in.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. So we got to hear a little bit about the, the stormwater plan and a little bit on the hold and what that means. So there's a. A commitment to bring that back to you once it's figured out a little bit more. Um, what else is on your mind? Kent.
Um, Mike, Suggs, yeah. Good job, man. You're the best. Second, it, uh, yeah, the, I haven't spoke on the stormwater thing, but my colleagues and fellow council members have pretty much, uh, stole all my thunder. So, uh, the options of, is it, uh, E eight and E nine? I totally support. Figure out, how do we get this? And I understand that, you know, there's kind of an order to which the things are going to happen. And so if E nine takes a little bit more time, I understand that. And F seven and F eight, councilmember Ross is correct. If we can get the structural gap closed over two or even if it, I don't think, and I don't know, it may take three cycles. You know, it might take six years for us to really close that gap and have it headed in the, the lines headed in the opposite, in the right direction. So I'm in support of those two as well. And as you'd stated earlier, Mike, I'm definitely the high performance. I'd like to see the city just be a high-performance city and a secure government. I just think that's super important. How, where we're headed, and that people know where we're headed. So here, the short answer, I support all of these and that we actually get them done. Thank you.
So let's break this apart into just a couple of things, just so that we can get some clarity. On the general work plan that we walked through and you got questions answered, we know that there's a few pieces that you needed some additional information, and staff is committed to kind of get that back to you. But in general, one of the questions Mike has for you is, are there any, other than these optional projects and the Dog Park not showing up on that work plan, is there anything else that's not on the work plan that you really believe needs to be there? If so, let us know now. Go ahead, Ken, you've got something.
Sorry, I kept poking at my mute and it wouldn't mute. Anyway, the one thing that I think that council needs to be cognizant of is that, you know, we're having a lot of these wants. And let's do this, and let's do that, and let's do the other. As councilmember Trine just said, you know, let's get all these things done. And when he said that, I practically heard the city manager's head drop to his desk and say, what the heck? But what I would like to mention and to bring out, and I don't know whether it fits in this format well, is the reality from the city manager's viewpoint on what he needs to have this happen. We have a lot of asks, and it's easy for us to sit in our going into city hall once or twice a month or a week and walk around and drop a lot of asks out. And then, you know, we're not the ones who are trying to find staffing and money and funds to fulfill all these requests. So I'd just like to open it up to the city manager to say, I'd like to say to the city manager, we'd like to give you the tools that you need to achieve these asks, and we'd like to hear from you at some point. It doesn't have to be now, but realistically, where are you on your comfort level on being able to achieve these things? And are you comfortable coming to us and saying, in the present circumstance, I can and can't? And if I can't, these are the additional resources that I would need you to approve to make these things happen? Well, that's the question I have.
I can answer most of it in a very short statement. You folks remember the movie Jerry Maguire? Show me the money! Okay. Joke for the day. What was the most important thing for me here out of today was to help, you help us find a direction. So given the optimistic feeling that the council has, I will go back with staff and we will begin to scope these things out and develop a game plan over the course of the next 30 days or so. And bring back, hopefully within the next 60 days or so, some more defined timelines and where we can get some proposals going. We will start with that immediately so that we can work with you in this first quarter to outline that and revisit these with you. So we know what we can achieve this year, what it's going to take, and what might have to come before the next item. So that's my quick response. I appreciate the support and the direction about moving things along. Now let's go.
Thank you, Dave.
Karen, you have your hand raised.
So are we seriously putting the Dog Park on here for a want on top of all this other stuff?
Yeah, that's a good question. So part of that was just to say, is there, you know, first, if there was anything missing? But then, does everything have equal value? Does everything go on there? I kind of wanted to kind of talk with you all about that.
Yeah, I hope that Anjali can weigh in here again. It, it's nice, I mean.
I know 42% said they really liked it now, but 42% means that, you know, 58% said, no, thank you. So I mean.
You do have a lot of priority things, and as Anjali has outlined, and certainly you can weigh in here, Anjali, limited staff and a very full plate and high desire. But I think she really needs an opportunity to scope it out a bit more. The initial scoping said, and when we talked about it, said, oh, my God, I don't know how I'm going to get this done right now, given everything else. So I think we could have staff go back and take a look at what needs to fall off. But there, there would need to be some major realignment because it's just not a simple task. But Anjali, give you the opportunity.
So, you know, the Dog Park is not in the key project recommendations of the pro plan. There's a chapter that summarizes the key project recommendations. That's what fed into the CIP. And it, you know, it's not something staff has looked at as of now. So the CIP that you see in front of you is what we've showed you last year and what's in the budget. And like Dave said, if there's an interest from council, we are more than happy to go to regroup, look at what we can pull off, or, you know, even just come back to council first and sit down and say, what projects here are you willing to move out so that we can, you know, focus a little more on the Dog Park? We'd also be interested in hearing whether we are interested in temporary or permanent because they, they will come with different demands from the team and different timelines. So, you know, I just say that we haven't really put much time to it. And if there's a desire from council, we will bring it to you for discussion and guidance.
Kristi, you have your hand raised.
Thanks, yeah. You know, I think, I don't see the Dog Park listed here, and it was just something that was brought up. So I can comment on it because originally it came back from an email that I had had. I think, you know, I referenced it as being part of the parking lot, and that's, I'm fine if it's on the parking lot. But I don't want to completely lose sight of things that our residents have repeatedly asked for. And I think, you know, the larger concern, too, is that if we have parks, including Beaton Park, which is not a park that the, you know, public is supposed to be on presently. There are signs that say no trespassing, but they're being used as off-leash parks now by residents. And while that one's probably less intrusive to park users at Big Rock, I see dogs off-leash a lot at Big Rock as well. And there are some people that are very fearful of dogs. So having places for dogs to be off-leash is important. That being said, I recognize that we have our Beaver Lake Dog Park. But I think it belongs somewhere on a parking lot so that we don't lose sight of those items that our residents have verbalized that they would like to have in the city. So, and whether it's temporary or permanent, I think permanent's always better. But, you know, my suggestion of Beaton Hill as a temporary one was the thought of, you know, not a lot of cost. I understand that there's other stuff to it. But I think, again, it doesn't need to be something that we're pushing something else off of the agenda this year. But I do think it belongs somewhere on a parking lot.
Yeah, that's really helpful because, you know, we sometimes run into windows of, you know, we have a little gap. We have some capacity, we can keep chipping at it and gathering data and, you know, see where we are a little later in the year and keep that in mind so that we don't lose sight of it.
Well, we haven't had a whole lot of humor going on here, and I, oh, Pam keeps changing her background. But I was dying laughing when she had the Bernie Sanders with the mittens because that is all over the internet right now. And I was like, kind of snickering to myself when she had it up there. So Pam, I'll put one up for a second just to add to the humor for just a minute, so.
Thanks for noticing. I figured, I was like, did nobody notice that Bernie joined our meeting?
No. Oh, no. It's funny.
Levity is always good. That was fun to see. Those mittens are, you know, making.
There's Bernie in the way around.
There you go. That's funny. So, Mike, what else do we need? That is cute, Kristi, I like that. Again, here's my question. Is there any value in the council weighing these against each other? All these, can you, you know, is the question on the table, can you do them all? Because you're saying they're great, is, should there be an order? If push comes to shove and you don't have enough resource, I mean, help me frame the question here. Or is it just that you've got enough information from the council that you know they like these options, E eight through G eight? You know, do we want some sort of order, or what are you looking for?
Yeah, I think it's, I think you stated it well. I think we've received enough feedback at this point to know that there's interest in all of these projects. So I think it's a matter of us going back and looking at what will it take for, you know, the individual departments to accomplish that? And how might that affect other items on the work plan? So that will be, we'll try, we'll do that review. And when we bring this work plan back to the council, hopefully we'll have that ready for you. And you can see what the pros and cons are of adding these items.
Great. So if what I'm going to summarize, what I think that I've witnessed here is, one, you've shared the work plan. Right, and in general, you, councilmembers got their questions answered in that. We know that there's a little bit of follow-up in that, but you're clear about where your priorities are fitting in to the work plan. Mike has shared that clearly, and then you had a chance to weigh in on some of these optional projects. So with all of this, is one of the lingering questions we still want to leave today with is, you know, maybe just a verbal or just let us see, you know, are you comfortable with this in general being your work plan for the year? Knowing that, you know, it's not 100% bought off because you still have a few things that will come back to the council, a few things scoped out a little bit more. But does this give enough direction then to the city team members to do what they need to do? Is that the key question on the table? Is that what you need, Mike? Or do you guys feel like you have that question answered?
Yes, I was going to, I think that's kind of what we, what we need to know before we move past this item. Additionally, within the work plan, there are, you know, priorities mentioned. So we would like to get that feedback as well. So maybe we could start, this is the last discussion prompt, which is really, what are the council's priorities and have we accurately captured them here? So the, that's the last question I have is, you know, do we want to pare down the list of priorities and make it more focused? Or add things to the list to make it broader? Because, you know, whatever, whatever the council wants to land on as far as priorities go, we as staff can work them into a graphic similar to what we did in 2018, following the 2018 retreat. So right here, as we talked about yesterday, basically, all of those focus area sheets that we looked at had staff's assumption of priorities. And we polled any items that were listed as a staff-assumed priority up into the summary sheet. So there's nothing new, we're not recreating anything new from what was in the focus area sheets. It's just a summary view of what was marked as a priority with the yellow stars indicating things that aligned with the pre-retreat interview feedback that Janelle had gathered. So any, just wanted to open it up for discussion there as far as the list of priorities and what the council thinks of it.
Right, so Kristi, again, I'm not sure whether your hand has been raised or not. Do you have something?
Well, I was going to go push the button, then I realized it was already raised. So I just say, well, I'll just leave it there. So I appreciate kind of getting this snapshot view of everything. My feedback would be, you know, maybe this is a council exercise, but, you know, there's a lot of priorities here, a lot. I see a lot of yellow stars, and that becomes a challenge when, you know, we get entangled in something. Let's just use the EIS, for example. What if it doesn't wrap up on time or wraps up early? Right, I know, just as a hypothetical, right? So I, almost prioritizing your priorities becomes important to know. If something has to fall off of this list, what is it? And how do we decide? And if we rank them, you know, and some of that has to do by department, right? Because some departments are a little heavier in terms of where those priorities are. I mean, Department of Community Development shows up a whole lot there. You know, if something has to shove off, what do we push? So anyway, that's just kind of my feedback in potential exercise for council would be to rank those priorities.
Thanks, Kristi. Kent, you were next.
Yeah, so I was even thinking about like, a little bit like what Kristi was doing. Okay, which ones are critical and which ones are priority? And so if it's critical and prioritized, and this is kind of what staff is looking at based on what they believe we also have a priority for, I think it's pretty accurate. The only one on here that I find to be like challenging for me as just one voice on the council is R seven and R eleven in that should Inglewood Middle School synthetic turf and field overlay be critical? Or all that time, energy, and money would be, would that? And my thought there is because one is controlled by the city and the other is controlled by the school district. And there has been talk about, you know, that there is maybe a group of people that would rather have the city be in control and spending the money on fields that are owned by the residents. Okay, so that's one where I just make a decision whether I would, but I just would say there would be one that would be looked at for me. And then, now, this is personal for me. I think land acquisition is critical. And there is on there, though, in the other screens, of course, it's ongoing. Land acquisition is ongoing, both for parks and for future improvements in the city. So wetlands, that kind of stuff. So, but I just think that it's probably more critical. I don't know if I'd put a star on the priority, but that would be one thing I would change if it was to reflect my perspective on it. So.
Thanks, Kent. And Pam, before we get to you, I'm wondering, Jeff, do you have an answer to what Kent was just? I'm wondering if there's a relationship between you raising your hand and what Kent was just offering.
I don't have it there. I was going to suggest one project to take off, but I can come back when, in a moment.
Thank you. We'll go to Pam next, and then we'll come back to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate, Kristi, what you were saying about sort of us doing a deeper dive on the priorities. I wonder, though, if the time would be better spent with us developing a process with the city manager in terms of, you know, how he will bring things to us. I feel like the staff went and built out a work plan that I'm assuming, unless someone says otherwise, they think this is what they can deliver, you know, barring unseen circumstances. And so we should just have a process in place that when something unexpected comes up that can't be mitigated in the current scheduling and capacity, that how will that come to us? And then we make those decisions. And the only reason I say that is because we could go through that exercise of, you know, of farting prioritization. But if something changes, we may have to do that again anyway. So I'm kind of more of a, let's have a good process in place to deal with how that will come to us and how we can quickly make those decisions to help staff as opposed to coming up with a list that, whatever that thing is. that whatever that thing is that threw staff for a loop might actually throw our priorities for that same loop. And so we wouldn't really be able to use that. So that might be my suggestion is just to have that sort of, hey, Mr. City Manager, we empower, we want to remind you, you already know this, but we want to remind you and we agree that you are empowered to come back to us, say, hey, remember how we agreed to this? Something changed, now we need to make a decision. And when we bring you new things, you say, okay, what are we going to give up? And that we're all reminded that that's kind of where we are, that staff has put together everything they think they can do. And anything new we want to add is going to be that give and take, what's that process? And I'll throw in there, I know that was a big one, I will throw in there. Kent, I know you have some reservations about the Inglewood Middle School. I will say though, that renovating school property, that also belongs to the citizens. So the school district is also a government entity, so those fields also belong to the citizens and they get probably more use. Anjali could probably speak to this, but I think the school fields and the school facilities actually probably get used more because they're used during the day and in the evenings than sometimes some of our municipal facility. So I don't know that it's really that bad. We get a lot more fields there and, as she pointed out as well, the shortages are in the north end of the city. So I don't know that that's really necessarily totally upside down, but if the school district owns it, the citizens own it still.
On that particular issue, Anjali, want to mention where we're at with the school district, just take 60 seconds.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So to answer Dave's question and council member Stuart's question, we actually have started the discussions and are bringing an MOU to city council for your review. What we've worked with the school district is if in fact we are, the city is going to put in a significant investment into these fields, then we want to be sure that we can amend the ILA, the inter-local agreement that we have with them for an extended period of time. So you know, the life of the turf is about 10 years, but if we are going to be, you know, renovating two fields and putting in the order of 10 and more million, 10 million or more, we are looking at a 20-year amendment to the ILA and they are agreeable to that. And we'd be, you know, bringing to you obviously the city's role and responsibilities and what the district will be doing. Now, this is a different form of land acquisition, I would say, because it is hard to find flat land out there to go and buy. And what the district is really bringing to the table is about, I think it's roughly 10 acres of graded land that we build fields on. You have a parking lot that's already built, you know, we know how expensive it is to build a parking lot and all the stormwater regulations. So that's what the district brings to the table on something like this. So. And then to answer council member Stuart's question, that's absolutely right. So on our park properties, these fields would stay unused until kids are out of school. There's very, you know, there's almost no use during the day. So when it's on school property, it gets used during the day by the school kids and then after school, the city gets to schedule it and earn a revenue, but primarily, you know, it's a benefit to the citizens. Does that help, Dave? Did you want to add to that?
No, that was the important point. The staff had described some 10-year ILAs to me before and I know when we first started talking about this, I said, gosh, for this kind of investment, we need 20 years if we can get it. And staff has been able to negotiate with the school district, with amiable school district to bring back a 20-year ILA. So I was very positive about that. I just wanted you to share that.
Okay. So Mike, let me check back in with you about what you need next with the work plan and the priorities here.
Yeah, so I think the goal for today was to, of course, answer council's questions, determine if we have all the right projects on there. And then like you were mentioning earlier, Wendy, it was to, you know, kind of come to a head nod or at least a consensus that we're feeling generally comfortable with the work plan with the discussion and the changes shown. So that's kind of what we're trying to take out of this and if it's possible to, you know, come to some sort of an agreement as far as the priorities go, or maybe we need to do more work on it, it'd be helpful to receive that feedback as well.
Sure. And can I ask an additional question around that? Is it useful to prioritize capital projects by themselves? And your studies plans and other operating items by themselves too, since you have a strong blue header in each? It's like, do you need priorities in each one or are they going to be pitted against each other for overall priorities for everything that's on this page?
I would say there are two separate categories, so that they would be separate in my mind.
Okay. And I know we don't have a ton of time, but I thought I'd throw a process idea out there, council members. I'm wondering if you could look at the first part, the upper part, the studies, plans and other items. There's probably what, 12 to 15 items in there? I'd be curious if you could look at that and come up with, you know, if you were to pick your, you know, if you were to prioritize at least maybe your top eight, right? Take half and say, here's, here would be my priority order. And then put that into chat. So if I'm one of you, let's, I'm just going to make this up. I might say L1 and then E4, then L5. See what I'm saying? I might go through my list and say, I would say out of all of these, my top eight are this. And I would put them into order and then I want you to put it into chat. So then you'd see Wendy and then you'd see, you know, L1, comma, E5, comma. Does that make sense? I'd like to see your order. And I think it would just be useful to see how close are you without having the narrative together, all right? And you're going to do it separately. What I'd like you to do only this time is the studies, plans and operating items. We'll do capital budget next, all right? Your top eight.
Is that an ish?
I love it. Well, you know, ideally it would be great for you to do all, what, 15? If you wanted to put them all into whatever order, that's great. But I just thought if you could at least prioritize your top eight and in your preferred order.
What?
Eight-ish.
Just like to see what I can get away with.
This is the same thing that goes wrong with community surveys and I think Karen would resonate with this. With no price tag attached to it, you don't know where you're getting the bang for the buck. So if it's really inexpensive but important, you're going to put in your priority list. But if it's very expensive and on the number eight, it might get bumped down. So it's really hard to rank, really hard to rank without a budget attached to it, to be honest with you.
I appreciate that, Chris. And as someone who does this a lot, you not only need, what's the budget? What's the impact? What's the other criteria that you want to agree on? But let's say the next time you get together, you can kind of create that criteria and then do it. But I'm curious again, just, you know, it's kind of like the little litmus test right now, just to kind of see where things land.
He says top eight, is that right?
Yeah, and if you wanted to do more, you could. I'm just trying to keep it reasonable for you to prioritize. But if you could prioritize from your perspective, everything in that upper quadrant, what would that be? There you go. Thank you.
Things important to note too, right? Some of these, like, it's not an option. Right, they're kind of required. I mean, I guess we don't have to do a mid-buy budget, but we could do, right? And, you know, the ADA work is legally required, so some of this stuff isn't just a personal preference.
Can I just make a comment? You do actually have to do a mid-buy review. You don't have to change the budget, but you have to do, so it would take a little time.
Thanks.
No one should have been surprised by what, Kent?
That I went outside the box.
Where?
Well, because I put E8 and 9 and they're not on the box, so there's options that were.
Bad boy.
Yeah. Yeah, I struggled like you did, Pam. It's like, well, some of these things are kind of like man, ADA? Of course we're doing that, right? I mean, so some of them.
In the top eight, right?
Well, we're going to do.
Do the comp plan docket stuff. We're required to do a mid-buy review. We're wired to do ADA.
Yeah, so I just, I figured those are going to happen. So those are kind of like, one, okay, call them one, two and three, and then I wanted my eight.
So there are, there are some, I see the critical and priority columns a little bit differently. So the, we don't have all of our mandatory projects here on the priority projects list. For example, the property tax levy that we have to adopt routinely every year, it's mandated by law, but I wouldn't consider that necessarily to be a priority of council. I think the priorities for council are things that they're just strongly interested in. They really want to work on, they want to learn more about and, you know, it's the priority for council to get these done this year. And while there is some overlap between the critical and priority, it might help to look at it kind of in that way.
Does that mean that I can pick three more because I don't have to pick the ones that are mandatory on this list or?
Yes, I would say so, yeah.
I'd say yes. Hey, Mike, are you trying to tell that there's a wrong answer?
I might be, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I like that, you know, I like that teacher, you know, the teacher that tells me that there's no wrong answer here, kid, you could put what you want down. I like that teacher, so. Just a little humor there, a little teacher humor, sorry. Actually, I'm not sorry.
Awesome. You know, so first of all, I appreciate you all doing this. And just know that, you know, you'll get a chance to kind of come back, but, you know, at first blush, it's interesting to see if things kind of are landing in a similar place for you. Just knowing that you'll want to have a little bit more of a conversation about this, kind of like Chris was just offering, you know, budget considerations, what's the other data that might be informing this? You know, just some criteria that helps you decide priorities. But in the meantime, we've got a little something to get a pulse check, I would offer, given the amount of time that we have left today. Can we do the same with the capital projects, right? You've already probably would have done that. Let's go ahead and shoot for the moon here. If you could do all of them, put them into a particular order just to kind of give that information to Mike and his team, his colleagues at this, you know, help make this happen. So we'll let you do that and then we will start our, oh, actually, and Jeff, thank you. You had something you wanted to weigh in on.
Just that T3 is under construction. It's almost complete. It should open this summer. So while it's critical and a priority, I can't imagine you stopping it only because it's under contract. But things have happened, so I don't know where that fits, but I wanted that clarity for you.
Thanks, Jeff, yeah. Definitely.
So we're prioritizing these, but they are different. They're different division, right? Different departments. So I mean, I don't know that we have to prioritize some of the parks work and the other work against each other, do we? Because aren't they really going to be different resources anyway?
I'm going to chime in real quick here, you know, similar to what Jeff said. Big Rock Park is, you know, is close to ready. It's something we're going to try and open up later this year. So, you know, that's kind of a done deal. And then back to the discussions last year when we put together the CIP. Inglewood Middle School is one of our, you know, has been sitting on our CIP for several years. And then we try and balance out the funds over every two years. I think we heard a comment that, you know, if you aren't spending the dollars, you're also not making a good use of taxpayer money. So if we don't get that project accomplished, there'll be a good chunk of money that we'll be moving forward because we wouldn't be able to catch up on any other capital project that quickly. It's a positive problem to have, you know, to have more money, but I just wanted to point that out, that that is actually our biggest spend for the next two years.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're pretty close to being done with that. So Mike, I think we've had, most folks have weighed in on this. I think we'll get Christie's. Did you do the capital one, Kristi, yet?
No.
All right, so while they're doing that, Mike, I'll put you on point for a moment. If you be ready to share with folks what happens next with this great work. And then we'll start our checkout in a moment.
Wendy, do you have Mike working some little magic here? Is that what's going on here in the background that we don't see? He's going to rearrange all these so that He's going to rearrange all these so that it's in our priority.
Hamster on the wheel.
I know, Mike. Is that what he's doing?
Ah, I don't know. If you ask, am I having him do anything? No.
That was my question. Because I figured you're kind of like Santa Claus. And so I have to guess what the present is. So Santa is, Mike, really, you know, you got your elves, but they're really doing that kind of stuff for us.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of feedback here in the chat. And I'm not sure it's something I can process right here on the fly. So I think it's going to be the case that we, as a leadership team, kind of sit down and go through these preferences, as well as all the other discussion that we've had today. And like I said earlier, just kind of work to update the materials and bring them back to council for, you know, hopefully further discussion and adoption.
Yeah, Mike, do you want to go ahead and stop screen sharing? I think we're, we're good with this piece. And I see Karen's hand up and Ken's hand up. So how about Karen and then Ken?
I just wanted to add something on communication before we close for the day. And it's something that I'm thinking might save time at the meetings. And that is if we could add on to the agenda bill. So the agenda bill, a little, a little box at the top where we could add what meeting it was discussed at. So by the time we're getting to the last meeting and you're wanting an action taken, so that we're not having to go back. And so we can say, you know, to educate the public, we shouldn't be educating the public by the time we're making a decision. That should be done. And frankly, if they're watching the meeting, they're probably educated. You don't have those people that are are just bored and hey, let's watch a council meeting. That doesn't happen. So I'm trying to, this way they can look at it and they can, they can actually go back and know where to go to look it up. So we can avoid that whole big section of, you know, having to do that at a meeting.
Is that doable? Are there decision makers in the room that can help make that happen?
I'll just say, I think we'd have to talk with the city clerk's office because they manage the agenda bill template. I don't know how easy that is to modify, but I know something that I strive to do, and I think others, is to link in the agenda bill body back to previous meetings, agenda items, just to kind of cut back on some of the background and things like that, that we have to actually write into the agenda bill. You know, we say, see such and such meeting date for the the presentation that was given a couple of months ago. So regardless, yeah, we'll definitely look into that and see, see what we can do.
Okay.
Thanks. Ken, you lowered your hand. Are you good? Sweet. All right, we're kind of in that time. You've done some great work today. So we've heard from Mike a little bit, you know, or is there any other summary about the the work that has been done this last day and a half and how that's going to come back to the council? I think just let's tie some of those pieces up. I know Lita's been taking notes, so I know you're going to have meeting minutes. I've been recording, so that link, once it finishes, it's, I don't know, whatever it's called, creation. I send the link to Debbie and the team and they'll post that. So you'll have all of that public record. But Mike, is there anything in particular that you want to add about when things are coming back? Or what happens next in terms of this work plan and priorities?
Yeah, I don't have the exact date yet. The next council meeting is February 2nd. And just based on the discussion today, it's, it might be a little bit tight to turn it around for that, that meeting date. But I just need to kind of regroup with the leadership team. I'm personally more of a processor. It's, it's easier for me to just kind of sit down and try and make sense of it. So over the next few days, I'll be doing that. And we'll definitely follow up with council as far as, you know, when they can expect to see some of this return. I know there was some discussion about agenda items discussing things related to the council's rules of procedure as far as communication goes and and that sort of thing. So there may be some changes to the rules that will be coming back as well. Again, just need to talk with Dave and the rest of the group.
Thanks, Mike. Ken, your hand.
Yeah. So before we finish up, and I always wait too long, so I never get to say what I'm thinking about. And then everything ends and I forget. So I know this was considered a council retreat. But realistically, the council is a bunch of amateurs. We're a bunch of people that just happened to get elected without any particular expertise in running a city. And I just want to bring to the forefront the level of importance and respect and and daily work that staff does from city manager all the way on down the line, people on this meeting and not on this meeting. These are the folks who run the city. These are the folks who make this work. These are the people who put in 40, 50, 60 hours a week to actually make the city function. We happen to be the electeds, so we term this a council retreat. But I would just like to make sure that we all, as council members, acknowledge, or at least I hope we acknowledge, that the the staff is of utmost importance. They get my utmost gratitude and respect. And they're the ones who make the city work, get the streets cleaned, do the planning, do all the worksheets. And we just sit up there and kind of say, yea or nay. And we'd be absolutely nowhere without them. So they, in my opinion, are the true professionals. And I don't want to let this retreat go without acknowledging that. That's all.
Thanks, Ken. It's awesome.
I'd agree more.
Thanks, Karen. So I wanted to give I'm hoping for two more things. One, give Karen and Dave a chance, maybe some for some final comments. But then everybody gets their at the end, one word checkout, right? So be thinking of the one word as you're leaving the room. Again, tired, you can't use the word tired. All right. So but just a little bit more than one word, you know, Karen and Dave just kind of bookend or starting of the retreat and the ending of it from your perspectives. So Karen, why don't you go first?
I'll take three words. Go pack up.
She loves that. I love it. That's good. All right, Dave, your turn.
Accomplishments.
Okay. All right. So since you're kind of both kind of kicking off the one word, we got the go pack go. So Dave, who do you want to hear from? We'll, we'll bounce around the group. Everyone leave the room, at least with your.
Well, on on my screen immediately to my right is Pam. So Pam.
Transparency. Let's, let's keep going with public, public transparency. And I will bounce it. I'll go to my right, Chris Gianni.
You're on mute, Chris. Can you say it again?
My word is direction.
Got some idea of the direction we're going. And I'm going to pass it off to Kristy Malcho.
Struggling with a singular word, unfortunately. So I don't know. I mean, I think adaptability, if I had to think of one thing, just because this is really hard to do a retreat remote. It's really, really challenging. So, you know, we were adaptable on that front the best that we can. But, you know, it's, it's safe to say there's something lost in not being in the same room with each other, unfortunately. So, but I know a lot of councils are struggling with that very issue. So I will pass it to Ken Gamblin.
Courage for the future. And about Jeff?
Teamwork. And I'll pass it on to Anjali.
I'd say this was really helpful. And thank you. And I'll pass it on to Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I'm excited. And I'll pass it on to David Pyle.
Thank you. I'd say this was revealing. Happy Friday, everybody.
Who do you want to pick, David?
That's right. I pass it to Lita.
Hi, I chose optimism. We've got direction, moving forward.
Who do you want to hear from, Lita?
Oh. Did you not get that? Okay, optimism. Direction and moving forward.
Yep. Who do you want to call on next to go?
Mike Sugg.
My word is relieved.
Mike, did you call on someone?
Oh, yeah, Kelly.
My word is patience. That's a pretty big work program. So a lot of patience this year. Danica.
I'm going to steal somebody else's that I liked. I liked Christie's adaptability because I, I'm sure going to need that to pivot stormwater. Who else has not gone? Lisa Marshall, have you gone yet?
No, my word is impressed, not surprised, but impressed by how amazing you guys were able to to do on this work plan. And I choose Kevin.
Well, thank you. I will go with hopeful. And if I could pick a personal word, if you look over your shoulder outside, sunshine. And so let's see, I think Jeff, Ellicus, I don't think he's gone yet.
Yeah, I've gone once.
Sorry. I'm sure who has it. Aaron?
Challenging. I don't know if you heard that. And let's see, Councilmember Ross, have you gone? Closer. Who else is there?
Chief Clark.
Insightful. Have a great weekend, everybody.
So more people. So why don't you raise your hand and make it easy for the last few, I think.
All right, Jim.
Very helpful. This was a good session. Yeah, Celia, yeah.
I think I might be the last one. So I will, one word, united. That's a question mark back there.
Did we get everybody? All right, my word, my one word checkout is impressed. I had actually had written that down as well, Lisa. I just think that I know it is not easy to do this online. It really isn't. And you persevered and you asked your questions and you stayed engaged. And so kudos to every one of you for making this as best as it can be. So thank you for, for your intentions and your, I don't know, just, just being you. Look forward to the great work that you have ahead of you. Karen, do you have anything else you wanted to add? I saw you start to take your. Do you want to add your word? Are you good?
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, see, it's 402. Way to go. You did awesome. Have a great weekend, everybody. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council.
Thank you, everyone.